UBSUDDR.LIVE's Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
All right, we'll call this meeting a regular meeting to order. I need to read some information for us tonight. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California a result of a threat of COVID-19. While the governor recently issued Executive Order N-0721, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N-0821 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are top priority for the City of Yuba City and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting tonight is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner?
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Here.
Councilmember Espandola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Greg is here to give the invocation. If you'll stand for that, then I'd ask former councilman Manny Cardozo, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards?
Shall we pray? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of your Son Jesus, whom we celebrate this Christmas season. May every citizen in our community come to experience the peace on earth and goodwill towards men proclaimed by the angels that first Christmas night. There is so much hostility and division in our conversation today, and we so desperately need to listen and hear and see one another. Please bless and watch over the city council as they seek to lead us well in such times. Give them a heart to serve us and not themselves. We have much to be thankful for in this community, and we are grateful for this place we all call home. Please protect it, guard it, and nurture it with understanding and wisdom. I pray for the families of these council members and for the stress and strain that is often brought to bear upon them as they sacrifice and serve our community. Watch over our first responders, our teachers, our business owners, and our medical and health professionals. As we continue to grapple with the realities and consequences of COVID, we look to you for health and strength and compassion. May we love our neighbors as ourselves. As this council works and plans and deliberates even tonight, give them discernment. Establish the work of their hands and grant all they need to accomplish the tasks set before them. Bless their staff members and all who serve our city. We lift them all before you this evening, and we ask that you would encourage them in their service to the city and the people of Yuba City. I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Luke.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. I'll ask the city's attorney to report out from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to agenda modifications and approval. We do have a couple of items to note. Staff correction to item 10, the 2022 City Council Meeting Calendar. Please note that the recommendation is to cancel the January 4th, May 3rd, August 2nd, 2022 regular council meetings. And then item 11, appointments to the City Council Regional Boards and Committee is being pulled from the consent and will be heard separately. Do we have any other modifications or approval?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, we will move along to Agenda Item 1, our Economic Development. Yes, sir?
I am so sorry. For Agenda Item Number 25, it will be kept on the agenda, but additional documents have been submitted and are now available for the public.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. We'll go to Item 1, which is Economic Development Commissioner's Recognition. I'd like to invite the council down front and to help with this. But could we get Todd Redman, Christine Ivory, Vinnie Joel, Stacy Brookman, Margaret Fernandez, and Steve Hammerstrom to join us down front, and Dorina Sumi regrets that she was not able to be here tonight. Is everyone here? There, Steve. Okay. You forget the mic, and I almost forgot my glasses. I'm used to coming out here without them because I'm not having to read, so let's get your certificates here. First of all, we want to welcome you guys here tonight, and thank you for serving as you guys have. The Economic Development Commission was established in 2008 as an advisory board for the city council, the city manager, and the city's economic development staff in all matters related to economic development. At that time, the commission gave input to the city's economic development strategy work plan, oversaw its implementation, and recommended changes as economic market conditions shifted. The Economic Development Commission consists of seven members and one alternate with representation from diverse local businesses and industries. Due to COVID-19 and various other factors, the current Economic Development Commission has been on hold for more than a year. And it's unfortunate that in November 2021, the commission was dissolved. So here tonight, the council would like to come together and thank you for your service and your efforts to better the community of Yuba City. And Mr. Devin Barber. Well, you've been with us a long time, and you've done a lot of great things for the city. And we want to honor you because you are retiring from us. And actually, I think it happened a couple of days ago, correct?
Right.
Friday was the last day. So thank you for coming back on Tuesday night. By the way, check in at the office before you leave. But really appreciate everything you've done. We've got a proclamation here to honor you, and you've done a lot because I've got a lot of reading to do. So... The proclamation we're going to present to you tonight says, whereas Devin Barber has over 31 years of experience or service for the city of Yuba City and did retire on December 17, 2021, and whereas Devin started his career with the city in Public Works and held the position of Engineering Aid 1 and 2, and Assistant Construction Inspector, and in June 1995, he is promoted to Information Systems Technician and promoted to Information Systems Manager in the Information Resources Division of the Administrative Services Department in October 1997, and led the newly formed General Services Department for three years as Director, where he amassed an incredible institutional and working knowledge of many city systems and is still called on today to provide guidance on building systems and equipment. And whereas, among many other achievements, in no chronological order, Devin has overseen and implemented technology upgrades and modernization in nearly all areas of the city, including fiber networking to city facilities, the current ERP system, online utility bill presentment and payments, CAD RMS for the police and fire departments, computers and cameras in city vehicles, body worn cameras, the former paging system for public safety callouts, AVL CAD mapping, 911 console upgrades for the dispatchers, citizen business crime reporting, centralized GIS citywide, wireless networks for fire stations 4 and 7, and the GAP and SASA VoIP phone systems under a single plan transition, Nobel file and email services to Microsoft File and Exchange Mail services, virtualized the city's networks, electronic document storage, migrated services to the cloud, email spam and virus filter, email disaster recovery systems, advanced firewall computer standardization, computer OES and software distribution system, help desk for IT, Wi-Fi at city facilities, council chambers, audiovisual, yubacity.net, electronic access control to city facilities, computer controlled HVAC, virtual meeting systems for fire, police, and city hall, the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, and online recreation program enrollment and payments. I'm tired already.
I have 31 years to do it.
We're not done yet. So whereas Devin became the city's radio specialist overseeing the transition from wideband to the modern narrowband, a radio repeater in the Richland Housing Area, and radio inoperability for intricacy communication, and has been instrumental in the acquisition and building of information databases and reporting systems at the police department. There's more. And whereas Devin represented the mid-manager bargaining unit for many years exhibiting comprehensive communication and fairness in his ideas to promote recruitment and retention of the city's managers, and whereas Devin is a lifelong community member and exhibits genuine concern and empathy for the citizens and employees of the city of Yuba City. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Devin's outstanding and loyal service and sincerely urge all residents of the city of Yuba City to join me in recognizing Mr. Devin Barber for all of his contributions to the Yuba City community for the past 31 years. Done this 21st day, December 2021. City of Yuba City, County of Sutter.
I just want to say thank you. Over the years, I worked with some incredible people. The city has grown immensely, and I'm leaving it to great hands. Brian, Mike, Steve, Lance, they're all going to continue on and do great things. So I'd just like to say thank you to everyone. I'll miss you all, sir.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Now we'll move to Agenda Item 3, Public Communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be considered at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express opinions of the group. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak. Written requests received at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment. And we don't see... I do have one speaker's card, and that is Ms. Heather Eshman.
Good evening, council. Okay. First of all, I don't know if I'm confused on the agendas they have outside. This is actually before, so I'm not sure if you're using the same agenda we have. I don't know, but anyways. I wanted to come this evening, and I put the wrong name on the paper that I gave you. Sorry about that. I just wanted to thank somebody, and I wanted to first say, there are not many people, or there's not many people who won't do... Sorry. There are many things people won't do for money. For example, picking up garbage, cleaning toilets, working outside in all kinds of weather like last Monday, working shifts with weekends and on-call at all times. I'm not talking about our police and our safety, which they do that as well, maybe not the toilets, but I'm talking about the parks and rec workers that we have. I had the opportunity to speak to a few of them, and I was very impressed about the type of work that they do. They're maintaining 23 city parks, 175 acres in the Feather River. They've got the senior center, the outside of the police department, and the city halls. They're also doing the gap, and all that they're doing with one supervisor and 10 employees and the occasional part-time employees. And all that I ask is if maybe the council happens to see any of them working, you know, they're on their riding mowers, or if you could just maybe say thank you for the work that they do, because they have had a lot of issues in the past. They're the ones that are dealing regularly with the homeless that they find in the public spaces. They have to clean up all the mess. They have a lot of things that they have to do, and they're working outdoors in all kinds of weather to get it done. So I think that I just got the feeling they would appreciate a thank you every once in a while. And not that the supervisors aren't thanking them, but I think they'd like to hear something from maybe somebody a little higher up once in a while. I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you very much, Mr. McIntyre, for making that possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Eshman, on behalf of one of the five, I can tell you, there's many times that I think all of us have stopped and appreciated our public works, every employee that we have. So they do get to hear from us. Do we have any more comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Burns. So I'm going to offer a little words of encouragement here from God Almighty. So we have this never-ending biological warfare program going on. They call it COVID. So here's what I believe is the ultimate safeguard. It's Psalm 91. "He that dwelleth in the secret place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. I will say of the Lord, he is my refuge and my fortress. My God in him will I trust. Surely he shall deliver thee from the snare of the fowler and from the noisome pestilence. He shall cover thee with his feathers, and under his wings shalt thou trust. His truth shall be thy shield and buckler. Thou shalt not be afraid for the terror by night, nor for the arrow that flieth by day, nor for the pestilence that walketh in darkness, nor for the destruction that wasteth at noonday. A thousand shall fall at thy side, and ten thousand at thy right hand; but it shall not come nigh thee. Only with thy eyes shalt thou behold and see the reward of the wicked. Because thou hast made the Lord, which is my refuge, even the Most High thy habitation. There shall no evil befall thee; neither shall any plague come nigh thy dwelling. For he shall give his angels charge over thee to keep thee in all thy ways. They shall bear thee up in their hands lest thou dash thy foot against a stone. Thou shalt tread upon the lion and adder, the young lion and the dragon; shalt thou trample under feet. Because he hath set his love upon me, therefore will I deliver him. I will set him on high, because he hath known my name. He shall call upon me, and I will answer him. I will be with him in trouble; I will deliver him and honor him. With long life will I satisfy him and show him my salvation." I believe that's a good word.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anyone else? Anyone else under public comment? Do we have any comments online?
No public comment.
Okay. Thank you both. We'll move on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or public request items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. And we've noted that Item 12 has been asked to be removed at this time. Is there any comments from the council in any consent item? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any online?
No public comment.
Then I bring it back to the council for action.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd move to approve the Consent Calendar, Item 5 through 28, minus 12.
Okay. Have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a second from Councilmember Harris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. We will now take up Agenda Item 12, which is appointments to the City Council Regional Boards and Committees. Says presented by me. I did what has always been done in the past and prepared the committee assignments for the year, but I will defer any comments at this time to Councilwoman Espandola as she asks for it to be pulled. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward. Can we open up for a public comment?
I will after you're done with yours.
I would certainly have this moment for all of you to understand that these committee assignments are challenging for any mayor to decide on where and how we are selected to be placed. And in the notification of this, it came to be that the work under it came to be that the work under Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency is one of the committees that I'm asking for a discussion or review on this, a consideration for maybe a council member to switch with me if this would be so a willing decision that we can entertain at the council today and if we can open it up for public comment.
Any further comments from the council this time? All right. We will open it up to the public. I have three cards. Todd Kimmelshu, did I get it correct? All right.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Todd Kimmelshu. I'm a Butte County Supervisor and current Chair of the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. I'm here tonight because I know you're making community assignments, and I want to advocate to keep Grace Escondola on the Board of the SABUCA. We call it SABUCA. I don't know if you like all these acronyms, but that's what we call it, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. Grace is currently the Vice Chair. And Uba City is rotating the chair position for 2022. So Grace would be our chair. Our hope is that Grace will become the new Chair of SABUCA. Grace has been on the SABUCA Board for over three years now and has gained considerable knowledge of the importance of the agency as well as the complicated nature of the work that we do. She's got very good working relationship with SABUCA Executive Director Michael Baset. We all know in politics how important relationships are. Grace has formed relationships with Butte County leaders, including the Board of Supervisors and the mayors of both Biggs and Gridley. In addition to members of Levy District One and Nine, Charlie Hoppin is here, as well as Mike Morris, to support Grace. Not to mention high-level members of the Department of Water Resources. Continuity is very important to the organization, and Grace provides that. Grace regularly attends every monthly meeting and the executive meetings and has been intimately involved in the recent passage of the agency's updated strategic plan and the ongoing regional development impact fee program and various grant pursuits the agency is involved with. Grace will be a key advocate for 2022 as the agency aggressively pursues state and federal grants and will be leaned upon to actively engage in those meetings with potential granters. Finally, the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency provides flood protection which saves property and even saves lives. We oversee multimillion-dollar projects and are looking for more in the future. I'm very proud of what this organization has accomplished, and Grace has been a big part of that. So I would appreciate your time tonight, and I hope that you consider my request to have Grace remain on the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency Board of Directors. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We will have Charlie Hoppin.
Charlie Hoppin, Sutter County Farmer, Levy District One, representing the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. I understand the authority here, so, Mr. Shaw, I'm assuming I'm addressing you personally and not the entire board, but I will follow in Todd's words. Grace has been a very productive member of our Board and is due to rotate into Chair. We have some very serious issues with the state of California right now as regards to funding on emergency repairs and Sutter bypass. Grace has participated in that. She's attended every one of our meetings. And I understand that, given the structure of your Board, it's necessary to rotate members to us. Shawn has been a very productive member and passed Chair to our Board. I think Todd hit on a very critical word, and that's continuity. I think Grace is prepared to be Board Chair after that time. If rotations happen, I think that's all good and well. But I would ask you to consider leaving her on the Board, at least for another term, so she can fill out her obligation as Chair of the Board, and we can maintain that continuity. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Mark Mulder.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers. I just want to speak on behalf of Grace Escondola. This is really easy for me. Grace is a hard worker. To take nothing from any of you, you're all hard workers. I recognize that you have a job to do. I can say that continuity... And I'm sorry, I'm Mark Mulder, the Business Manager of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union. I jump right in there a little too fast. I apologize. Shawn, he was, in his infinite wisdom, appointed to that Board a couple of years ago. Mark, Mr. Boomgarden, continued that. And with the continuity that Grace is having and gonna bring to the Board, I currently went to a SABUCA meeting. I believe we were talking about the Levy Districts and all the issues that are coming up. It's gonna be important that we're all a part of this to try to get this done. If you could please consider the continuity and consider the importance and the people that are asking you to please consider this. I'll leave it in your hands. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Thank you. Do we have any more comments from the public? Any more comments from the public? Any online?
No public comment.
Okay. And that, I'll bring it back to the council. Any comments from the council? None? I will make a couple of comments. First of all, as far as the committee assignments, they are put together by the mayor, but they have to be ratified by this council. So it's not a sole decision of myself. There's a lot more that goes into the decision process than the length of time someone has been on a particular committee. It has to look at what's in the best interest of the city going forward, has a look at what is the best interest overall for this community. And as I've already said, I made the committee assignments, and Councilman Harris has chaired SABUCA before. He's been on it. And I know we're scheduled to go through the chairs again. So you've got a well-experienced wealth of knowledge there in Councilmember Harris. You also get the continuity and the synergy that he also sets as our representative on SECOC. So he has a ton of connections in Sacramento. And the thinking behind the other part is my Vice Mayor is the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Harris are the only two that's guaranteed to be here in another 11 months because there's an election coming up. We need the continuity going forward. And so that's the reason I appointed the Vice Mayor, and that's my rationale behind it. And so why I appreciate everyone becoming... It's nothing about Councilwoman Escondola, it's nothing about your work, nothing about your commitment. It is the discretion of the mayor to make the appointments. And I did it and took a couple of months to really think it through and figure out where would be the best fit, because that's really the toughest job to do here. So with that, I would like to close the public comments.
You're the mayor. I'd like to just say a final statement as you close that section of the conversation, please.
Go ahead.
I thoroughly thank you for the community that came out to say those remarks in support of the work that we're doing with Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. It has been a tremendous gift to be able to work amongst all of you and continue to do that work because even though, as the determination by my colleagues, the council are not interested in changing the assignments at this point, and I respect that. I can accept it. And just to know that that work will continue on and those relationships will continue to flourish in other forms and other ways. And Supervisor Kimmelshu, I certainly appreciate, because I know Butte County, we have quite a bit of work that we're still moving towards on that. And Mike Morris and Mark Mulder, I appreciate your time to be here. And Charlie Hopkins, who just left and not probably enjoying the answer of that outcome. But I can accept it, and we move on. I'd be happy to share. I know Mike Baset does an excellent job and will bring you forward with a lot of information. I've been on there three years, and it's taken me that long to really understand the structural pieces of that committee. And as a community, I want you to know that I have represented you with your safety and the safety of this community always in mind. So I thank you so much for allowing me to continue to do this work, and I'll do it in other committees.
Thank you. And a final comment on that before I call for a motion. She nailed it on the head. Just because we do or do not set on a committee or a commission, the relationships are always there. The synergies are always there. Our roles up here are not identified strictly by what committees and commissions we set on. So thank you, Grace, for your time and your service. And it's still not a done deal. So at this point, I will open the floor for a motion, whatever that may be.
To the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to approve... Make a motion to approve the City Council assignments and regional boards and committees for county year 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Can I do a roll call?
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Kirchner?
Yes.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Yes.
Councilmember Escondola?
No.
Councilmember Harris? Mayor Shaw?
Yes. Okay. The committee assignments are assigned for the year. Thank you all. We will now move to Agenda Item 29, which is Home Key 2.0 Habitat for Humanity Presentation. We will have Mr. Ben Moody coming to podium. Before Mr. Moody takes the podium tonight to talk about this project, I want to bring us all up to speed on where we're at with this project and why we're here tonight. Because that's one thing we need to be crystal clear on. With what we have before us tonight, this council is not expected to make a single decision tonight. So I want to be clear on that. We're not expected to make a single decision tonight. So this is not the project's going forward or the project's not going forward. This project hit our radar a very short time ago. There are tons of questions, which I'm sure you have and we have. And we've all had the ability, I think most of us have, to sit down with Mr. Nicoletti and go through the project, but just led into more questions, and we've heard from the public as well. So it's very important tonight that as we get through the presentation, we hear from the public, the departments, our city team, the council, with all questions that we all have. And I want to take it one step further, so you know where I'm expecting this to go. Once we're done tonight, we will take more additional questions through 5:00 PM tomorrow if they can be emailed to the city clerk. Because we want to make sure we get all questions answered before this comes to us for a decision. So Sarah, can you give us your email address that they would be able to send questions to you at?
Cityclerk@ubacity.net.
All right. That is cityclerk@ubacity.net. So with that, Mr. Moody, you have the floor, my friend.
All right. So good evening, Mayor Shaw, members of the council. So the item before you, as discussed, it's really, this is a workshop informational session from Habitat for Humanity from Uba Sutter to basically talk about a proposed project, Home Key 2.0, at the Bonanza Inn on 1001 Clark Avenue. And so there's no necessary action tonight. There'll be a presentation from Habitat. Sutter County Health and Human Services is available for questions also and also from the city. And so we've heard loud and clear from the community and internally from staff, you know, about what this project, what does that mean? You know, and there's questions regarding, how does this affect the community positively and negatively? Concerns from the neighbors, nearby businesses? Is this an attractive nuisance? Or is it operated in a way to help alleviate homeless in the Uba City? What is being proposed at the convention center and the restaurant? Long-term stability of the site, management, business plan? Needed human health services provided by Sutter County and those ongoing costs? Does prioritizing... Is there a way to prioritize so it serves Sutter County, Uba City residents? And then just what is the revenue loss to the city in those ongoing commitments that are needed? And so Habitat is here today to help answer that questions and walk through their proposed project. And then also, it's an opportunity for the public that's been noticed to share some of their concerns and ask those questions. And then, again, staff will take those questions and coordinate with the clerk and try to put a response so the public has those for everybody. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Habitat for Humanity.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joseph Hale, and I work with Habitat for Humanity at Uba Sutter. And we're gonna talk a little bit about the Home Key Project and how all those functions work. I also have a lot of paperwork here that I can give to individuals in the community to kind of see what we're doing and how all those functions work out. All right. So let me see. It might take a second to get this right. Let's see if I'm going the right way. All right. There we go. So Habitat for Humanity, if, for those not familiar with it, is a housing builder. One of the things that we do is we will build new homes for families, sell those to families, and create a sense of homeownership. We do disaster relief, permanent housing, such as the project we're gonna talk about tonight. And we also do home renovations. So if there's individuals who are homeowners, but they don't have the funding to be able to take care of much-needed issues with the house, we can work on that. So one of the things that I do want to make clear, because I know it creates often a lot of confusion, is we're not a homeless services provider. We work with them for various avenues that we're into. And this program is not a homeless... Just a homeless program. It is a permanent housing program. This is where individuals will live for long term. This is... These individuals aren't living there for free. These individuals pay rent, just like everyone else, and live under the same rental conditions as other people. So this isn't a shelter and won't be operated like a shelter. So we really focus on a hand-up approach when we're doing services in the community. So talking a little bit about the Home Key Program. So the Home Key Program that came from the 2020 CARES Act funding. Basically, with the loss of jobs, all the elements that had been created by the situation with COVID, it created various funding sources to help support and supplement communities. They put aside $1.45 billion into the community to be able to provide opportunities for this program throughout the state. The state used this to focus on purchasing hotel facilities because they didn't want people to purchase existing apartment complexes because those were already filled with people, and we don't want to have to relocate hotels, especially in our situation, which were... Had very limited rentals. The one we're working with now had a very low number of people occupying it because of everything going on. So people weren't traveling as much. So a great opportunity to use those as a way to alleviate the issue with the lack of affordable housing in communities. So the goal is to partner with the City of Uba City on this project and submit an application. And that application would go in in January, in the end of January, if everything comes to fruition and there's interest from the city and the community. The other element that's important to know is there is no local funding that is required to be able to make this program work. This program is fully funded through Home Key that covers the acquisition of the property, that covers the renovations to the property, and also provides supplemental program funding. One of the great benefits for that is if, you know, it's funding that if it doesn't come here, it's just gonna go to LA, some other area that's gonna use up the same funding, but it offers an opportunity for us to bring funding into this community. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the problems facing the Uba Sutter region. We have, in our situation, rental rates that have been increasing from $1,200 to $1,500 for one- and two-bedroom apartments. And you're seeing people, especially the elderly individuals, making around $1,100 a month. One of the things we are seeing is the highest rate... One of the things we are seeing is the highest rate of elderly individuals entering into homelessness because they don't have funding. Eleven hundred dollar social security check doesn't pay a twelve hundred dollar rent. So they go and they seek programs, they try to get vouchers. A lot of programs don't take vouchers because a voucher has a cap on it. So the housing authority will issue a lot of vouchers to people and a lot of renters won't take it because if a voucher is only worth seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and they want twelve hundred, well, that's a huge gap. And so you're seeing a lot of the situation, especially now. There's a real big lack of affordable housing in our area. One of the other elements that occurs is when you're dealing with the homeless situation, especially for those involved in law enforcement. I feel really bad for those who work in that area because they're kind of trying to do this job and dealing with homeless with an arm tied behind their back. Because there are situations that are put in place that say you, it's not against the law to be homeless. So if they can't be on private property, then in public property is the only option, that's where they're, that's where they got to go. Those are the only two options. If someone doesn't want them on their private property, they go onto public property. If a law enforcement officer approaches them, they really have to give them direction on where they can go. They have to be able to go, hey, you can't be there. I have a shelter or I have a place for you to be able to go to. If they can't do that, they're limited on what they can do. And the individual stays in that location and you end up, and with our situation, we're just increasing in homeless numbers because of this lack of affordable housing. So it creates concerns for the community members, people who want to go to the park if they can't access the park because there's a large amount of people there camping or living because that's the location that they have. So when you have affordable housing, I think it's better than doing more and more and more shelters. Because if you keep putting people in shelters and you don't have a place for them to go, you just grow more shelters and you grow a population who are experiencing homelessness. If you can take them and you can maneuver them into a situation where they can find housing, then you need less shelters and just, you just build affordable housing. Once they go through the process, are able to move into a place, they work with caseworkers, go through a process. Sometimes that waiting list can be a very long time. But they eventually get into a situation where now they have housing and now there's one less individual on there. Some of the reasons that you may see that there's still a big burden or there's a lot of individuals out there is because in addition to the homeless population we currently have, people enter into homelessness. As you have housing that's not available to them, it increases, it increases that number. They don't have a place to go, rents increase. You know, there's only so many houses available and, you know, this is a good way of preventing those increases, getting control of it and working through that program. So I did want to say that we did get letters, just to kind of show this program from both the Sheriff's County or Sheriff's Office of Uba County and the Sheriff's Office of Sutter County that I'd love to share with all of you. I won't read the whole letters. I'd love to give them to you and read what the sheriffs had to say about the situation. But the overall is a huge decrease in the number of criminal activity, number of law enforcement calls. One example is calls going from a hundred and eighty-seven in one year at one hotel facility to just twenty-seven, with most of those related to health issues. And none related to any level of high crime. And this is a facility that's been in operation for over a year. And that's the change that's been seen. Same thing in Uba County. It'll show that the numbers decreased. So when we're talking about the volume of need, the situation that we're dealing with, this is numbers from HUD that I think the city submitted to them within the last couple of years. This shows that there are eleven thousand five hundred and nine people of the sixty-five thousand residents that were listed during this study that are living in poverty in Uba City. That's one out of five point seven people. So that's a good percentage of the population who are dealing with that. And if things, you don't create affordable housing, the number will continue to go up. You know, there's some variances between the number of homeless, depending on the study, anywhere from five hundred to a thousand. But one thing out of this data that we were able to pull is that ninety-two percent show to be long-term residents. That's people who are a part of this community, may have been born here or lived into this community a good portion of their life. So I know there's concerns that homeless go to places where there's available resources. But the reality is the available resources take a long, long time. So we don't get a lot of influx because you have waiting lists. We have a waiting list of seven hundred and fourteen people who need housing. A huge number of those are elderly individuals, people who have medical care, people the hospital can't release until they have a safe place for them to go because their medical needs are significant. So that's a big part of what we look at when we're doing this program. So this isn't our first project. We've had a number of projects that we have worked on. Two that are similar to this are Harmony Village off of Highway ninety-nine. That has sixty, it had sixty-two units, but we worked and were able to create another unit during the remodel process. So because we want to maximize the efficiency and services that we can provide. So that is off of ninety-nine for any of those who want to visit it. Get to that later. We do do tours and we do want the community to see all the things that we're doing and be very transparent with that. The other project is behind Walmart called Prosperity Village. That is another sixty-two unit facility. So that's a hundred and twenty, you know, five people that are going to be able to get out of poverty, not, no longer be at risk of homelessness because they have services available to them. So the program that we're looking at, it would be a hundred and thirty units of low-income apartments. And this is usually for singles or couples. As I had said before, it's not a homeless shelter, it's a permanent housing. And we focus on individuals who are experiencing or who are elderly, disabled and veterans. So that's our major focus. And like I said, there's no length of stay limits. This is permanent housing. So they're not going to be out on the street a month later dealing with this same repetitive problem. If, say, they're an individual who is homeless. And this service is not just for homeless individuals, it's also for those who are at risk. We have a lot of people who are in a situation where they're going to lose their home. And this, and a ton of it is happening very quickly. So as I said, there's, they have rental agreements, they're going to follow all the same rules. And we estimate with this type of project, based on the numbers we have at other sites, that we're going to probably host about twenty-five percent of veterans at that site. We have a lot of military veterans who served this country, who ended up in, you know, a situation where they can't work, they're on disability. One of the veterans living at Harmony Village had lost his arm. And he isn't able to do function and work in a normal environment, lives off of disability and that's what he can afford. And we work with the Veterans Affairs Office to help provide services to those individuals. So one of the other elements that we do is we want to keep the environment safe. We want to be good neighbors to those in the community. So one of the things that we also provide is we're going to have a secure place. We're going to have twenty-four seven staff. We're going to have a gated community, you know, guests who come there, check in as part of the process. You know, and the residents will all be from the local area. I know that is a concern in the community that we're not bringing people that we're serving. Well, you know, we have a big enough waiting list to be able to serve just those here in the community. By far. In fact, even after we serve them, there's still going to be a lot that still have need, just because of the numbers we're dealing with in this community. We are very careful. We don't let people park RVs on the property. We're, you know, vehicles who are on it have to be registered. You know, those are important elements. We want to make sure we're not having anything going on out there. So we keep it safe by doing that. We're going to have individuals who, that are staying there, like I said, are mostly local residents. We do have a couple, one exception. One of the allowances that's required by the state of California is anyone who is escaping domestic violence. Say if they escape to this community, we still have to be able to provide that resource to them. We don't see that as a big number. We haven't had that happen with our projects as of yet, but that is something that could occur. So that's something that we look at. We provide management counseling. There's going to be medical services. One of the things we do at Harmony Village is every Friday at Venice Health comes out. We have a large number of elderly people who are there, who have prescriptions. They'll come out, they'll deliver prescriptions, provide supplies, do checkups on individuals' health. Because, you know, they don't have a great degree of transportation based because of their income. So. So we engage staff on this project about three months ago, but there's a lot, lot of work in getting to the process before it gets to this point that it comes to the council. So, you know, they want to make sure that the project's feasible. They want to make sure that, you know, we go through all those processes to show that we can really develop a good management plan and something that's going to be a good structure for the city of Uba City. So that's one of the avenues that we went through. And then in the last month, it was brought before the board so we could do this community outreach. One of the things we determined is the Bonanza Inn would be a great opportunity. One of the reasons it has a large number of units. It's an older building that has a lot of repair needs. Some of the stuff's not available, like the restaurants are closed, the convention center's currently closed because of things that need to be done to get it right. This allows us to bring funding into the community to renovate this building, bring it to a really like-new condition. So that we can start providing these services. So we thought it was great for that. We also know that they're opening, I believe, two to four new hotels in the area. And, you know, that makes a good availability for a facility like that there as well. Just because there'll, you know, individuals wanting to go to hotels will have a lot more options in the near future. We had a, made an agreement with the owner on the property. If we are to go forward, they are willing to sell and are working with us on that. We also would fund it through Home Key. As I had mentioned before, you know, all those services would be covered under that. We want to do some additions to the property. We would add, you know, decorative fence, solar. We do the ADA upgrades. There's fire sprinklers, there's other elements that the facility needs as part of that facelift that we'd be more than willing to do to make it a good and safe site. So I want to talk about partners. So we have a number of partners, obviously, when you're doing a project of this magnitude, you're going to have a number of people who are going to be involved in it. One of, an organization we've worked with for five years, who has the executive director who's been working, doing casework for seventeen years, is partnering us with us on the project. So they would provide onsite supportive services. A lot of these individuals still need, like I said, the medical supplies, various things. They need, some of them have counseling, work to help get benefits that they may need. We also work with Sutter County Health and Human Services. They do a lot of referrals. We work with them at Harmony Village. They wouldn't be onsite in that capacity, but we would still work with them to make sure that the individuals who need the services are getting HHS services. You know, the services that are available to all of us here if we have, if we qualify income-wise. So we'll coordinate with them on those elements. At Venice Health, we're going to work to build the same relationship we have at Harmony Village where they can bring out prescriptions to individuals. As I said, the focus is elderly, so we're going to have a large number of people who are going to have a lot of need. So that's one of the elements we're going to work towards in this. We also work with the Housing Authority. We have a number of people who have vouchers who work within our system. A lot of times we'll look at those individuals for getting into a project like this because it gives them some more civility to have the voucher in place. Especially if they're an individual who has a very low income, it gives them more money to be able to purchase food and other needs. We will also be working with Veterans Affairs. We've worked with them for the last couple of years with Harmony Village. They, one of the great things about the Veterans Affairs is also they do the referrals. They're able to typically provide vouchers that can help fund housing. And they provide casework for the veterans. So individuals who are there, they'll be able to provide various services for, to help support the program. Alright, so hopping over, I know this is a lot of information, so. But it's definitely important to go over. One of the things I want to talk about now is basically the grant submission. So Habitat would apply with the city of Uba City if this goes forward through a competitive grant process and we'd request twenty-five million. I know that sounds like an awful lot of money, but a lot of that goes to program services and other elements. Thirteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand is for the acquisition. It actually appraised one million over that, which was good because that's within the alignment. And then the rehabilitation cost, we anticipate for about four million. And then the supplemental program funding that we're going to try and break down over a twenty-year period is going to be about two point five million. So those are kind of the elements. You can see that that total number does not add up to that twenty-five million. The reason I list the twenty-five million is when you apply for grants, you apply for more than you need. Because if additional resources become available, they become an option. If, say, you were looking at some repair costs, you were off, that's additional money you can look at being able to acquire for that. So it gives us a higher amount we can apply for. So at the end of it, we're going to apply for what we need to do the program. And hopefully what we can get supplemented over those next, over that twenty-year period. In addition, we're, Habitat for Humanity, our organization, is going to be providing about three-quarters of a million in materials and renovation stuff for this project. Where we have lots of material from Global Furniture, which is a big donor, which provides office supplies. So we'll be able to fully set up offices there. We have, we get roofing material. We get IKEA cabinets, Valspar paint, Whirlpool appliances. We just get a lot of things from internet, from national donors that are going to help reduce the cost of getting this project renovated. So we're going to provide that as part of this. We also have a Restore. Are any of you familiar with the Restore we have in Marysville? Well, there's a lot that aren't, so we'll have to get you some information on that. But, so the Restore is a discount home improvement center. And what it does is it collects donated materials, mostly new, that we resell to the public. And all the funds that get generated create a general income account for Habitat that we can use to supplement projects. One of the great elements of the Restore that we love to do is we love to use it as funding gap. So everyone who's in the grant world, you apply for grants for a program and you hope you get funded. You hope that, but it doesn't always happen. So having a source of revenue that can fill in those gaps when we have them is really, really helpful. And happy to say the Restore actually generates as a kind of a restore-type setup, one point one million a year. So it is a big fundraiser for the organization and it supports a huge amount of projects in the area. We also, looking at the facility, because there's going to be people paying rents, there's a hundred and thirty units. When we look at that over the span of a year, that, based on what we estimate the average rent to be, that's about seven hundred and eighty thousand. On the most efficient end, that's pretty close to what we feel our basic operating costs are going to be there. However, on the higher end, we hope to, we'd supplement grant funding or we would utilize the supplemental funding that's available to the program. And that would offset costs. If we run out of it, then we can supplement it with funding from our Restore or in writing grants. So we feel pretty strong that we have a very long-term ability to be successful in this project. And that's based on a twenty-year span. So if everything goes through, if the city agrees, if the community accepts this project as a whole, we would look to have a resolution at the next council meeting on January eighteenth and would invite you all there as well. And if that goes through, we would work to get the grant submitted. We packaged a lot of the material before the end of the month. In late March is when we estimate we would receive this award if approved. And we would hopefully acquire the Bonanza in May, which is when the rehabilitation to the building would commence and hopefully be completed in October. And we'd probably start moving people in in November of next year. So it's kind of, we are with the schedule right now. Alright, so community benefit. Looking at this, the project, we think it helps the city towards meeting its goals of low-income housing. I know they've done a housing element and we understand that that is seen as pretty much the biggest need in the city right now is this lack of affordable housing. We estimate that there's a hundred and thirty units, but some of them will be couples. So we see that actually providing for about a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty people. We are going to be able to provide the necessary maintenance and upgrades to an aging building. One of the problems that often happens when a hotel or facility gets older, you get a lot of deferred maintenance. Then if someone's not budgeting for it, and in an economy where hotels aren't, weren't doing very well for Then if someone's not budgeting for it and in an economy where hotels aren't, weren't doing very well for a while, you have a lot of deferred maintenance. And you start having structural issues, you start having problems, then you end up with a derelict building, perhaps in the future that uh, and empty buildings become places where people spend time. Because a person who's experiencing homelessness wants to be able to, they, they don't want to be out in public. They want to find a place that they can feel safe and secure. So a lot of times that comes to finding a place that's, you know, an abandoned building or something like that. So our goal is, with the opportunity, with the funding available, let's bring it back to a new condition. Um, we also think it will reduce the impact on law enforcement by a significant amount. We think that individuals who uh get into this program, you know, I know hotels can typically draw trouble. That's uh, I don't think that's un- untypical in that experience, especially when they get older. Um, and they're more accepting of a wider range of people. You start to see more and more problems. Uh, so that's something that we're hoping to offset. And you know, based on these letters that, like I said, we can provide to you, I think they show that. So it's not just kind of telling you our hopes, it's showing you examples of these successes that have occurred. I think, and the project will also, like I didn't, I put six million dollars, I know we're asking for a lot more. But when you buy the pro, uh, my, when you buy the property from the owner, if the owner doesn't spend money in this area, it doesn't matter. But we know that between renovations, program services, we're going to generate about six million dollars worth of revenue into the community. Uh, for companies that build, do those sorts of works, also hiring employees to be able to provide services uh in the community. So it's going to employ people. So. Item ten is the long-term care of the facility. So Habitat uh does have a long-term obligation on this project. Uh, projects of this type, uh, they want to see going for a long time. So this one has a fifty-five uh year commitment as far as being, that property being used to serve this cause. Now, that doesn't mean it has to for that full length of time. Uh, the initial commitment is for five years that the, these services would be provided at that site because of the grant award. And then after that, if uh someone doesn't want to continue that service, things change. The property can be sold, a grant payment can be refunded. And the commitment would end if that would be the desire of a city or a community. Or, you know, we could, if we needed to, say, if there was an issue ever with our organization situation where we dissolved. The city could make the decision to provide it to another organization, such as the Housing Authority, to manage the same process, sell the property. There's a number of options. Our goal as this organization, we've been around for almost thirty years and plan to be around. And we don't think the housing need's going to end anytime soon, are willing to stay and be strong with that commitment. But I wanted to also present that worst-case scenario. Um, this would be Habitat's uh sixth facility, three, third of this type in the community. Um, one of the great things we have is Habitat is a builder. If you go out in Linda, we have a thirty-six unit development. We're building thirty-six brand-new homes. We're mostly done with this project now. We're actually going to build a nice park in the community along with it. We work with dozens of contractors in the area. We spend about, I want to say eight million, eight million or more per year in building structures and doing these types of work. Um, so we have great relationships in that community. We have a huge operations team. Uh, in our operations team is a licensed contractor. And we have eight staff who oversee, maintain these buildings. And you know, we have, we also, when there's issues, other issues, we'll work with subcontractors to make sure, because we want to keep this nice. We don't want this to turn into like a slumlord type of situation. We want the building to look very nice. And if you go out and visit Harmony Village, you can see that level of uh commitment. All right, so community involvement and tours. Um, one of the things that we think is very, very important in uh this community is we want the community involved. Uh, one of the things we love to do is we love to give, who want to give tours for any of those who are involved, who want to see this be a part of this project, we'd love to show you everything that we're doing. Um, we are willing, we can provide you a management plan so you can see how the property is being managed. Uh, you know, uh, we also work to establish a committee of residents so that not only can you see the project or hope that we fulfill our wishes, which we believe we will, but you can be a part of that decision-making. You can serve on a committee that helps oversee this type of project. Because Habitat as an organization is a part of the community. We're an arm of the community that provides a service to help support, and we feel that need is housing. You know, um, I also wanted to say that there were a lot of Home Key projects that were done last year. There were over forty projects done in the community. And of those forty projects, um, there were three that were selected that were running well, running efficient operations, great partners with the community. And uh HUD or, or sorry, HCD uh chose us as one of those. So we were able to uh do an effective project that they saw um exemplified this kind of service and this kind of support in the community. So I brought a whole bunch of these packets to share as well, so you can kind of see some of the things that we're doing. So I have two people here, if you want to raise your hands, John Nicoletti, Camille Thomas. And um, they are, if you haven't gone on a tour or worked with them, they are uh social butterflies. They are great members of the community. And uh, John uh would love to do site tours. That's, that's one of the things he gets, I think, a lot of joy in. And uh, I put his contact information on here. And uh, Camille uh Thomas as well. Uh, she's uh, works with the committee uh that we had established with Harmony Village uh to handle uh, or to, to basically hear uh perspectives of people in the community. So she's an individual that would likely work with you if this goes to fruition. So, and uh, really, that is, I tried to go a little quick, so I didn't take up too much time. But that is really the overview of the project and would love to answer any questions that you have, uh.
Uh, thank you. I, at this time, I'd like to bring Mr. Moody back up to the podium as he can finish up the city's presentation, because I think Mr. Moody has things to share with us as well. And then we'll bring it to the council for questions.
Yeah, thank you. Um. So Habitat is, is great. I mean, Joseph, uh, what John Nicoletti do in our community is, is really um awesome. I went on one of the tours uh through the facility, um, looked at the Harmony Village, looked at what they're doing in Linda. And with um, the available funding and the resources they have, i- it is truly great. And the city recognizes that there's an affordable housing need and we want to partner for that affordable housing need. Looking at it at a staff level, you know, basically looking at this with the city and, and reviewing it with the different departments. Um, our job is to provide the information straight, y- you know, to the council so you can make a decision. And so with that, there, there is real concern regarding um ongoing operations. What the, what the commitment is, there's, there's a real value to the T O T tax that's lost um going forward. There's um, due to the, the state of the building, there will be ongoing um um, capital costs for fire sprinklers, uh, you know, ongoing maintenance for structural stuff or roofs. Um, plans for services, what we need to coordinate with the county on what that, that ultimate need is and how that works out and what we need to partner with the county um to help facilitate that need. And so we just want to make sure um with the community that we're going into and making a decision wide, eyes wide open. And so that's, that's where um um, they, and, and again, Habitat um is working through that. And, and again, there, there's, but that's where um, it's really looking at what the project is taking on with the fifty-five-year commitment. And then understanding you're getting affordable housing for the city, but there's also a commitment with that from the city. And so I'm here to have, and happy to answer any more questions.
All right, thank you all. Uh, I'll bring it to the council first uh for any questions that they may have at this time.
Up through the mayor.
Sir.
And Mr. Moody. First, I echo your comments about uh the wonderful work that, that Joseph and, and John do with Habitat for Humanity. Tremendous uh community resource. Camille, I know you're involved with that as well and others. So um, I, I don't want these to be taken as necessarily negative, but these are some of my concerns going forward that, that I've, I've developed myself, plus those who have raised uh those to me. And I also want to thank John and Joseph for meeting with me this morning and taking some time out of their day to address some of the concerns and questions I had. I think first and foremost, you know, anytime you introduce a project like this, um, neighborhood compatibility becomes an issue. And so that remains a concern of mine. It's just that we, we have people who live in this particular area that have uh raised legitimate concerns to me about what's going on. So as we move forward with this project, I think your ability to reach out and, and uh, and take into consideration what those folks may have and any mitigation measures that might be able to, might be able to be taken to address any of their concerns. Um, a- as a steward of the city's finances, like you know, the long-term financial commitment or impact to Uba City is, is important to me. I mean, it's easy right now. Uh, as a former public official, I understand that grant funding's awesome. But occasionally grant funding dries up and we saw that uh in my personal experience with the fire department. We had funding for, for staffing for, for many years and then it dried up. And then we had to dip into our own pocket. So long-term sustainability of a, of a revenue source. Um, and I know you guys are super aggressive at, at grant funding, but eventually that may uh erode or evaporate. And that becomes a concern of mine. Uh, support from Sutter County, I know Mr. Smith is here, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I, I raised that with, with both of you this morning. I, you know, I've heard kind of mixed messages. So you know, as we move forward here, be important for our partners at Sutter County to weigh in on, on what they're able to, to provide and any needs that are necessary uh to support whatever um comes into um this Home Key project. Um, there are some great concepts here and uh, you know, I've heard different things uh over the, the several months. And um, they seem a bit fluid. I really like to nail it down. I'd really like to know more about, okay, this is what's going to happen inside um this Bonanza property. And uh, I think there's some, some partnership opportunities there. But uh, at this point, you know, like, to me, it's, it's about a business plan or a pro forma, if you will. What's actually going to go here? Let, let's try to nail that down a bit. Um, I'm concerned that uh, you know, typically a project like this comes to the city and then there's, there's requests for concessions, right? You, you're going to want us to waive fees and you're going to want us to do certain things. And as a partner, you know, we have to take that into consideration. I don't know what those are right now, so I'd be interested to know more about that as we move forward. Um, long-term costs, uh, you mentioned, you know, that uh, this is good for five years, but there's a fifty-five-year commitment from the city of Uba City. Um, one thing would be great is, you know, a project like this can be really great. But um, if John and Joseph, and I mentioned this to you this morning, if John and Joseph go away, then who's there to continue uh with the project? There's a lot of confidence with you two gentlemen and, and, and the organization that you're running and the work that you've done. But what happens if we lose both of you? Or if Habitat for Humanity becomes, uh, as you mentioned, maybe a part of a bigger entity and we lose some of that local control? And so I, I'm, I'm concerned about that and I hope maybe we can have more dialogue about that. Revenue reduction, we talked a little bit about the T O T. I know we forgot some figures on that, so I, I don't know that I need to really follow up on that. I understand what I think uh that means to us as far as trans, um, T O T tax and et cetera. Neighborhood mitigation, I would strongly encourage you to engage with those folks who live around you. I know you've begun that process. I don't know if there's things you could do that maybe would address their needs, but they've been very vocal, at least to me, in regards to their deep concern for what might happen in their neighborhood. And as a, as a resident of Uba City and one that's selected to represent folks, I think we need to take that into consideration. I'm also a little concerned about scale. You guys are growing quickly. You're doing great things. Uh, and so I'd like to, to know a little bit more about your ability to continue to support these great projects. Um, and, and, and provide the level of, of uh leadership and guidance. Uh, you know, as you go from a sixty, and I can't remember the numbers exactly, but now you're going to double that and you've got other stuff on the plate here. So uh, that's uh, um, important to me. You know, uh, other than that, you know, I, I think we're engaged in a process, as the mayor said, of, of beginning the process of learning more about what this is all about, engaging the public in that dialogue, taking into consideration all, all the positives and, and the negatives. And you know, I, I think uh, I think it's great. You guys came here and began the process of informing us uh as a community and as a council. And I look forward to getting um answers to some of those questions and, and seeing where this all ends up. Thank you.
You're the mayor. I appreciate um council member um Hoop Burns um insights. It's um the discussion of affordable housing is an issue that we need to carry on longer than in this particular time today. I've had, I have been very fortunate to be able to be part of the homeless consortium um, and have been part of the consortium for over twenty years. So the relationships of what Habitat has done, um, I have seen the growth uh from the original work that they've done to where they're at now. Um. One thing that, I, I mean, you covered a, a great list of, of concerns. I think one of the initial things that when um I was uh aware as a council member of this issue that I shared um with um Joseph, there you are, and Scott Thurman um at that time. Uh, because I'm a firm believer that if we're going to look at any kind of project that may be in place of a community, that you involve the community that lives there. That you begin the conversation with those individuals and not, you know, um, as it feels, I think, for the community, because I've been out there and, and observing it directly myself yesterday. And I think sometimes um it feels like this is almost kind of a last-minute kind of push of a conversation, which is, I think, not appreciated much um in our community. And I shared that with you, John, and um I do have um concerns about that. Um, affordable housing is needed. There are a lot of people in need. I want to help. I, the thing that concerns me is the, the aspect of um of the location, um, the ability for sustainability of this project long-term. After five years of contract services, whatever that may look like. Um, those are concerns and I have been, I think, very upfront about all of those issues. Um, I'm not saying anything differently to you than I would say to a person who lives in the community, because I think people can vouch for that. Um. I think that there are hopefully some other opportunities. Are there other hotels in our community area? Because Home Key Project is not just a one location. You know, there's possibly other areas in our community that we could explore. I don't know if our staff has made any such um possibility. Um, but I, I definitely understand the nature of grant writing. Um, as a grant writer myself for over thirty years, I, I understand the last-minute requests and how to try to pull all these projects together. Um, I think from one of five here, my message is not against affordable housing. Um, I am for when we build affordable housing and I believe a lot of our community wants to help people find homes for themselves. I think that we just need to approach it where we include them in the conversation early on. Not towards the last, feeling like the last minute of where we're heading in a decision, which today we make no decision, but that's where I'm at with this.
Thanks, Mayor.
Through the mayor, thank you. Um, and thank, thank you, Joseph, for that presentation and to Nick, Mr. John Nicoletti for his leadership on this program. I think we can all agree that um affordable housing at a critical, critical stage in this, at least in this state, is an issue in, in um this, this group of, of people up here hear about it all the time. And I don't want to repeat anything that's already been said, but I do have a couple of questions. I uh, um, Joseph, uh, as far as community benefits, you mentioned that uh, it would, it would reduce the impact, uh, impact of law enforcement currently at the Bonanza.
Yeah, uh, we absolutely believe that. I mean, one of the things that uh we have seen across both projects is a huge decrease in criminal activity and things like that going on at these sites. And it, and like I said, I didn't want to just give our word on it and that's why I had the letters. I can read the letter if you want.
No, I, I, maybe, yeah. I direct a question at chief, um, what is the current um law enforcement issues that you're seeing at the Bonanza?
Two thousand, uh, two thousand nineteen, we responded to eighty calls for service for the police department there. In two thousand twenty, a hundred calls for service. I, I wouldn't call. I wouldn't call that an inordinate amount of calls for service at a location like that. A lot of those calls are folks just not wanting to leave at the proper time the next day. My recollection, Commander Ashman could correct me if I'm wrong. I don't recall any very violent continued violent crimes occurring at that location. I know the fire department provided their their numbers as well. And per Chief Alexander, again, there's not an inordinate amount of fire department response to that location either.
Thank you for that, chief. And the second question I have for Joseph is you mentioned that the apartments that are bordering the Bonanza are currently listed as low income?
Well, so a number, I know there's individuals, some individuals who have vouchers there, but I believe there's, you know, there is an apartment complex. This is a very similar type of service. The majority of people who do live in apartments are fall within that low income range. And I believe there's a significant number there who are in that situation. And I don't have the numbers in front of me. I just know that some are vouchered. So really, I think what we're doing is really what's attached on the next property. There's apartments there. These would really become additional apartments.
Okay.
So I don't think it would be outside of what's already located right next to it.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you very much. Also echo that much appreciated on the presentations and the ride along on the tour the other day, John. I have to simply echo, since you beat me to the punch, some of the things that Councilmember Boom Garden brought up is the long term sustainability. We have a 20 year plan. We have some five years in there. But the city is technically on the hook for, I think it's 54 years. And then a lot of changes will be made. If you play the odds, most of us will not be here around that time. And so we might want to make sure we don't leave a time bomb for the folks that follow behind all of us. And so any plan has to be viable and sustainable. And I would like to hear more about that and if we have any more, anything we can hang our hat on as far as the guarantees, if you will, or next best thing to that, as far as the city's obligation. And I say all these things under the stipulation, and of course, we are for affordable housing. I mean, beyond for affordable housing, any opportunity we can have to make that happen for folks, we're there. But I go back to community accountability and the folks that live near there. I've gotten many calls and a really lengthy email that I read several times. And I know that if I was in that situation, I'd be writing the same thing. I live near a group home right now across the street and yeah, I'm lucky enough to where there's no issues other than the kids sitting on the roof smoking, but whatever. But it's not a huge deal. And I know the experiences of the folks down at South Sutter County on Oswald there have been great. And all the concerns that were brought up, I mean, it's easy to make assumptions. This type of person, in my mind, that I'm not familiar with this type of person means they're going to bring this activity. Simply has not been the experience. In fact, the management has really done a good job vetting and holding folks accountable and keeping a lid on things down there in my, what I have heard and seen. But I, I too would like to see some outreach. I'm not aware of what has happened already with the residents there. I don't blame them one bit. They don't know what they don't know. So maybe they, maybe the folks will do a good job and be good neighbors. But there's a potential there, you know, that they might not be. And so if there's any type of mitigation that can be put in place above and beyond what has already been planned, that would give me some comfort level for them. We want the right fit for the right project, for the right fit in the right area. As Councilwoman Spindola mentioned, maybe we can, there's some other alternatives as well, either instead of or additional to this one. But that is my, one of my biggest things. There's a lot of things also that come with that. And Joe, is there going to be services provided on this? Is the plan include services? Yeah. On this location for folks that aren't necessarily residents?
So no. So the case work services that'd be provided on site would be for those that are living there.
Okay. Excuse me. That answers one question. Because that will bring, you know, there's your motorhomes and everything, right? Because you can't really necessarily control. And then the folks that, one example that was brought up where folks, yeah, you can't have, you can't park or registered or or an unregistered or uninsured vehicle on the property. So the workaround is we just park it in front of Harper Freight and walk across the street. And that's a slippery slope too, potentially. So I don't know if there's a, if there's a plan to be a question, hey, if you have a vehicle, is be on the front end, right? To avoid that. I just don't want to add blight and problems to the neighborhood. I don't think anybody does. But that's a question that's not necessarily been fully answered yet. But I like the plan so far. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't mind answering. So, you know, early on in Harmony Village, an individual was trying to, or was trying to do that. We've worked with our residents, talked with them. And it ended, if you look at the field, like a great example would be the field next door to Harmony Village. Every once in a while someone parks there, but they get off very, you know, a lot of them get off very quickly. There was a, for a little time, there were some people parking there. We had conversations with them and they stopped using that. We also worked with, you know, the land owner at that site, just in case it came up in the future to give us permission and we will have the vehicles towed off of there if that comes up. So if you drive by there, you won't see very much of that. There is a truck stop and sometimes people temporarily park there because it's right next to the highway. But other than that, I think it's been in pretty good.
I guess that's a down in the weeds example that I brought up to kind of getting ahead of ourselves, but those are the types of things that I would like to at least address in the front end as much as possible for the quality of life of the residents.
Absolutely.
Should we move forward? I don't know. But once again, all for affordable housing are veterans. And what breaks my heart is these homeless children out there. I just, it gets me. And so I think we have a role to play in helping provide that. We talk about it a lot, but this is an opportunity to actually do something. But we also have to be responsible and make sure we're checking some boxes and some things are in place to protect the city. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to try not to repeat anything that's already been said by my colleagues because we've all covered it well, but I will definitely start with this and it's Joseph and John, thank you for all you do for the communities, because I know your heart's in the right place and you guys are doing a lot of great work around. When we get to this project, same thing I told you when we met, we have to weigh this on the merits and not the heartstrings. And we need affordable housing. We need all housing. I've said that for three years since I've been on the council. It's not just affordable. It's all housing because we've missed a lot of opportunity in our community. But this has to be on the merits and not on the heartstrings. And some of the questions that I have and whether they're answered later or there's a short answer, we can address this. And Joseph, some of these will be if you want to fill these or not. You talk about how this is not a homeless program. But in one of your early slides, you talked about the obstacles and how this solves homelessness and how this helps law enforcement. And if I'm the average person here in Uba City and don't get to sit down with you guys for hours and hear all this stuff in the background, I hear this can solve, help solve the homeless problem, but it's not a homeless shelter and it's not part of it. And it confuses us all. So how can you say you are in, but you're not a part of it?
Sure. So I think the big issue here is when it's permanent housing, the people live there are homeless. They're living in housing. This is where they're going to be. So they're not hanging out on the streets. When you have a shelter, you have the people will typically be out during the day wandering around and they're going to see the same type of experience they've seen in the past where people are out in the streets. If you have a place to go, they're not going to be hanging out out there. They're going to have a home. They're going to have a safe place and that's permanent housing. So anyone who's living there is not going to be amongst that homeless population. Now, people who have experienced homelessness, those at risk, have the opportunity to move into that place and that makes them, as I said, no longer homeless. They're permanently housed. If that makes sense.
It does if I've sat down with you for hours. But I use that as an example because we'll never get to that answer tonight to have it fully understood, I don't think, because you do have to understand a lot of it, but I think that is one of the obstacles that our community has is, is this a homeless shelter or in the homeless program or is this really low income housing? And we keep weaving those topics and those terms back and forth. And it's not just this project. It happened on the one on Garden Highway that RHA brought before us. It's going to be homeless and then it turned into low income and then it turned into whatever it is now. I mean, it's just continued at least three morphs over time. But I bring that back because my next question, and Mr. Chaffin, this might be a question for you. We've all had to live under the Boise decision for a while now. And while Home Key is tied to homelessness and making them not homelessness, the first question I asked was what Councilmember Boom Garden asked earlier is like, you guys aren't going to be around here for 54 more years. John, I trust you. I've known you. You've been a friend a long time. And you said, I don't think so, Dave. So what happens when John's not here? And how can another organization or different leadership or political pressure, anything use the Boise case to turn this into something that's not presented here tonight? We're talking 54 years out. I know it's pure speculation. But this is a reality we're living in. So what is our safeguards on that?
Thank you, counsel. Just for the public, the Boise, City of Boise case is a recent case regarding homelessness. The federal court essentially found that you couldn't take a certain sort of enforcement actions to stop sleeping homeless individuals or other people unless you had full housing or an alternative housing site available to them. So it really effectively hampered the public entities and the city's ability to help clean up certain areas and ensure that homelessness is not happening. So part of that effort in order to address the City of Boise case was to engage in housing services that would provide housing to the homeless so they no longer be homeless. And therefore, any homeless that you did have, you could have available beds at homeless shelters, et cetera. One of the challenges the cities have faced when they do have organizations that do provide housing is the type of commitment that's involved, your contractual obligations and the limitations on those. Because whether you're a nonprofit or for profit or you have a private public partnership, say that fast three times, there's always a chance of bankruptcy. There's always a chance of funding shortages. There's always these questions out there. You can put in certain protections into a contract, but as they say about contracts, they're only as good as the paper that they're written on. So you can try your best in order to minimize your risk and there are steps that the city can take, but there are no guarantees.
Okay. I thank you for that. These are just questions. Like I said, this is a much bigger topic than we're going to get to tonight, but these are questions that come up on all of our minds. Echo the sentiments about other properties. Or did you want to respond to that?
I just want to mention, one of the differences I think is part of this is there is a 55 year commitment. The initial commitment is five that the property stay in that and that the program run for five years. The 55 year commitment, it's like goes with the land. And what it does is it says, hey, this property is low income unless this note is satisfied. So if say 20 years passed and the property and you didn't want to do this service anymore, John or I weren't there, the property could be sold. It is an asset that the city has the right to relocate within this program. So if the city goes, oh, we're done doing this 15, 20 years from now, they can sell that property. And in 15, 20 years, property is probably going to be worth more than what's owed on it at that point. So I mean, that is a ability to do that, just to sell that off and not have to continue this project if the city were to want to go in that mode.
That actually led right into one of the other questions I had. What's the other strings attached to it? Because five years, 10 years, whatever down the line, we decide you guys are no longer there. City wants to sell it. Is the city financially obligated and morally obligated to relocate all the people that live there? And what's that burden going to put on the city? Because obviously if we end up in that case, you guys aren't there. It's, and I'm probably not here in 20 years, you know, so we've left a hornet's nest, so to speak, down the line. And I don't mean none of this negativity. John, you know, Joseph, I just talk very candid. And I'm looking at what might happen 10 and 20 years down the line. And so what would be our obligation? Would we have to relocate them, provide them more housing? There's got to be something out there on that.
Yeah. So I think what happens in that case is if you sell it to another property owner, that could be the obligation in selling it, that they maintain their tenancy and then they would deal with the tenants. So you can sell it with the exception that those tenants still live there. Or they can choose to move out. So there may be some relocation. I don't, because I don't know what it's going to be in 20 years, like if, how the laws may change on relocation or what those requirements may be. Typically, I know, I believe within the city, if they do force people out of a property or something to that effect, that they're required to provide relocation. I think though, if it's sold and those are part of that selling of that property, that could go without that. The city can also sell the property for more than what they would owe through this process to HCD if they chose not to go with a commitment. So they could sell it for a higher amount. Keep that, use that for relocation. If 20 years from now, the property is worth twice as much, then they can use some of that difference to do that if that's something that's required at that time.
And more than speculating 20 years out, you're looking at applying for a grant. So I'm curious, the grant has to say something in there because you both told me about the, basically the buyout provision where we could sell it and do that. So if it tells us we have that authority, the grant probably tells us somewhere what we have to do with the residents when that occurs. And that would be, you know, we can, you can respond in writing to that. That's fine. But those are things that we need to know. And then
So I was going to say, I think we did provide that material a while back. I don't know if it's made it to the attorney at this point, but we did provide that, I think. To Ben, I don't know if Ben can speak to that.
So we reached out to HCD just to confirm what is that commitment? Is there a way to sell it? And basically what they're saying is that it has, the sale would have to be approved by HCD. And then in your, let me read this, HCD email. Transfers of the property, so this is directly from Stephen Block with HCD. The transfers of the property would have to be approved by HCD. NOFA Section 604 with the requirement that the city still continues that that permanent housing unless it was approved. And so I guess on a staff level, when you have a housing element with needs, it's going to be an argument or how are you going to work through that? Not to say it couldn't happen, but there's definitely a discussion.
All right. Thank you. Just the last couple of things and then I want to open this up to the public. So we'll come back to the public in just a minute. But have you looked at other properties that's lesser in scale? That would be a question to answer. We do need a business plan, start to finish. We talked about that in our meeting and Councilmember Boom Garden brought that up. We need to know services in there. We need to know exactly what's going in there. There's a ton of partners that's been mismentioned. But we've heard rumors of services relocating over there and stuff. So we need to know exactly what's, what is the real plan. And then not only community support, we've got to have businesses support up and down Close Avenue Downtown Business Association, because we're all going to be impacted. And then back to the point about the community outreach. As one of five, I see us, if we go down this road together as a partner, but I see Habitat being the lead agency on this. And those community outreaches really need to be handled, in my opinion, by Habitat. Getting out, meeting with the businesses, meeting with the community before we come back together in January or 18th or even a little bit before. Because we're the partner, but you guys are the lead agency. You guys are the ones with the dreams. Okay? Anything else from the council before we open it up? And Joseph, I'll go back to you in a second.
You're the mayor. I just wanted to add that, I mean, good comments across the board from the council and for Habitat and Joseph and Ben, I really appreciate all the information. We've been receiving quite a bit of details that outline some of those questions as well. But one issue that I think is really really unclear in my mind is the density aspect of where that location of Bonanza is. Meaning, you know, 130, 100, whatever, a number of new residents, if that were to be the case. And the high density of that is a little bit challenging in the aspect of quality wraparound service. Wraparound services with a full gate. People coming in and out constantly and then residencies around. And businesses around there. I, and the roads on that area seem very narrow. So there's a lot of work that would need to be done, you know, by our public works. And trying to figure out how to fix some of that road issues. I, because there's, there's a lot of congestion already in that particular area. And then. So that density aspect of multiple community in, in that area. The other locations that you have right now seem to be in a further outside area where there isn't as much. Population running through in the sense of walking. You know, shoppers, cars, yes, possibly a lot, but it seems further out. It seems not in a higher density of the community that where this one seems to be. Proposed to us. And so I think as you're at walk, you know, trying to answer some of those other questions. How, how is that a realistic quality of? For those individuals that we're thinking possibly to, if to work to be placed there. And then all of the other road. Sidewalks, businesses on the back. And the three storage one on the other side. It kind of just flows over to all aspects of, of the community in that area. And you don't have to give me the right answer right now, Joseph, but I'm just curious of, of how that would play out in this whole plan because. There, and that's not including the wraparound services of everything else. And then, then on top of that, there's a consideration for the convention center to be engaged and active for use, right? And I'm not sure what that restaurant idea is being considered of the current existing business. But I'm, I'm, those are questions that I still have that are not clear. And. And it's really, I, I, I mean, it's Bonanza at one point was an extremely. High producing, everyone was there using, you know, weddings, activities. And it's really sad that the existing owner of the, of that business is not as genuinely invested. To the existing property and that, that's, that, you know, that hurts my heart a little that I wish they would invest. More so in, when they buy things like that in our community.
All right. With that, Joseph, I'd like to actually get on to the community at large because I have a lot of cards here. And so we're going to take the cards first that came in and this is just the order they were handed to me. John Nicoletti, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd prefer to take a pass and let residents speak. One clarification I'd like to make in the, the first question that you asked was. The definition of homelessness or not having a definition of homelessness and well, how does this make room in the whole system? So just like policing has advanced and firefighting has advanced. We all recognize the improved professionalism comes to those two sectors. Health and Human Services has advanced. It's not sexy. It doesn't make a lot of headlines. But they have paid close attention to how to administrate what they do. Working with a local homeless consortium, which we have now in Uba Center. Working with organized NGOs to supplement what Health and Human Services can't get to. Helped us develop our life building center. The training programs that happen at Hands of Hope, both at Spiva and at F Street in Marysville. And then we moved into the tough sheds, so Better Way. And when you go into Better Way, you don't just sleep in the tough shed all day. You, to accept that tough shed spot, you also accept a number of rules and regulations. I call it a training facility. So they get goal setting happening every 20 days or so. They have to check in. They can stay for up to 80 days. In that time, they go through financial training, they do job readiness. They look at just general life building skills. A lot of folks that have, have been living homeless. Forgot how to fill out forms, didn't need to. And so that's not going to work in a, in a normal society. As people get trained, a lot of those folks, especially seniors that have successfully achieved. Kind of a graduation status, if you will, from that environment. That's when we take those applicants and start looking at who moves into these apartments, these efficiency apartments. If they are really messed up and emotionally strained. Then we talk to behavioral health and we take a different route of service. It's more service before their dwelling. Here, this is permanent living that happens to have extra services just to keep you on board. Now, if they fail in our environment, then it go clear back to the river. They just go back one step. They stay in our system. That's a big part of the partnership with the county. They're really good at casework and we kind of help these people get back up. It's not always an easy road. But we are aware of the fact that folks that are close to homelessness. Just need a little nudge sometimes, a little bit of resource and they are up on their feet and going. And that's really the difference from down here in the bushes into the emergency stay. Into the training places, now into permanent housing. So they've had some preparation to get to what will be what you'll see, you know, when you see residents at Bonanza. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Pat Bruner.
Hi, I just want to say that I'm a resident at Harmony Village. And I really like it there. I wasn't homeless, but I was close to it. And I just feel really blessed that I'm able to live there, feel secure. Everybody's very friendly and outgoing and you look after one another and you help each other. And I just feel real good about living there. And I'm thankful that I can wake up in the morning and I have a warm rip over my head and a cool spot in the summertime. So. I don't know what else to say.
Anything else you'd like to add, ma'am?
I can't think of anything else.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if I may. Ma'am, I missed your name. Pat Bruner. Thank you.
And I'll ask, even if I say your name off the card, please state your name and address for the record when you, when you step to the podium, please. So Victoria Jaeger.
Good evening. I'm Victoria Jaeger. I live in Penn Valley. I'm General Chuck Jaeger's widow. So if I cried, just, I'll just keep going. Don't worry. I really, really was impressed with the presentation. And I really was impressed with all of your questions. And all of the things that each and every one of you has considered. I think they're very apt and, and great. I was really, I haven't been to one of these meetings and I really appreciate it. And while you don't want to, you know, pull on the heartstrings. How many of you have said, thank you for your service to a veteran? Right. And how many of you have meant it? Right. Thank you. Actions speak louder than words, as we all know. I'd hate to think of General Jaeger and all the maintainers. If they had limited resources, not having a place to live. So. So I just want to remind everybody, let's put our actions where our words are. And especially with the neighbors. I understand the concerns. I really do. But maybe it's up to you to thank a veteran for their service and get involved with Habitat for Humanity. And help them figure it out with you. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Jaeger, if I can just add, I met the general when I was stationed at Bill. Incredible man.
Well, you know. General Jaeger and I worked with John Nicoletti on a project. And that project had languished for 10 years. And then John stepped in and boom, it was done. With General Jaeger's help, I have to say as well.
Thank you. All right. And Tom McFerran.
My name is Tom McFerran. And I live at Harmony Village and I'm a resident and. I'm one of those guys that. Kind of lost in the system. I was disabled many years ago. But I didn't want to receive services. I didn't want help. I wanted to be independent. And. I fought it for many years. But then I had a heart attack, my fourth heart attack. With five stents in my heart. I died twice. And the recovery was different than other times. I've had other heart attacks. And this was very, very difficult. And I was living at the time off a mobile home park in Sutter Street. I owned the trailer, owned my own car. I was working. But I couldn't continue with what I was doing. My, no, very, very little income. Trailer was falling apart. Shower has broken. The restroom was leaking. It was difficult to cool, difficulty heat. It was constant problems and, and the fact that I was having difficulty getting around. Couldn't afford my car. I was two years behind in the licensing. Got a ticket for $900. Couldn't pay that. Trailer was getting behind and it's, it's licensed. I was just getting further and further behind. And then a gentleman I know and precious friend, Charles Ernst. Who was a 30 year retired PD here in Uba City. He came to me and he said, Tom, we've been watching, we know you. He's a friend of mine. He goes to Cornerstone Church. He's an elder at the Cornerstone Church. He came to me, he said, we've been watching you and, and we're inspired by you. We want to help you. So let me introduce you to a place. And they brought me over to Habitat, Harmony Village. And I'm a resident there now. And I have a shower. I have a place to sleep. A little bit different, the real bed, not like I would have slept in my trailer. And I'm, I'm, and now I've lost all income. As I'm in the middle of applying for disabilities, social security disability. I have no income, but because of the housing, because of what. Harmony does for people. I actually couldn't have, afford to have somebody help me. You know, where I was staying before in this trailer in the, in a little tiny gravel lot. It was costing me almost a thousand dollars a month and I wasn't making much more than that. And now I can afford to live there and, and my church is able to help me. Until I get my social security situation set up. So I, I, and I, and I'm, I'm very active in the community. I know the people there. I know the management. I love them to pieces. They're truly having an effect in people's lives. And, and because of my relationship with Charles, I know the history of that hotel. That hotel was not a good place. It had a very bad reputation. And, and Habitat came in, it's completely changed. And, and he's a property owner. And he's the one that introduced me. He was, he's, he was property boarders Habitat there. And, and Harmony Village and he, he just, he's sold out for this organization and he introduced me to it. And I, I'm, I'm just, I couldn't be more proud. If you have any questions about what it's like to live there or what it's like for the people, the management. That takes care of that property, let me know, because I can answer any questions you got there. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Going to shift gears slightly. Thank you to our city clerk for pointing this out. We did have two written requests. That came in 24 hours prior, so they each get five minutes. So I'm going to ask Maria Smith to come to the podium. And again, my apologies for not bringing you up first as you submitted in Apple time.
Mayor and, and council members, thank you for giving us a few minutes to talk tonight. My husband and I have been residents on Orange Street for 30 years this July. Our neighborhood has been slowly going downhill. We've been battling. The homeless situation and crime and. Our grandkids go, go to the park and our animal, animals come in the house with human feces. On a regular, for a while, on a regular basis. I'm, I understand Habitat is a wonderful organization. I am all for affordable housing. We are involved with our church. I am a teacher here in the community. We, they, I'm involved in lots of outreach programs. Sorry, I'm have to look at my notes.
Sarah, can we pause the timer for just a moment and we'll give you a few more minutes?
We have.
Ma'am, we can wait just a minute so that everyone has your attention.
I appreciate that Habitat has brought. Representation in because it's good to hear testimony. But the facility at Harmony Ridge is much, is a much different situation than the Bonanza Inn. 65 seats or 65 rooms of single living. Single residences is a lot different than 130 rooms of potentially double. Occupied residencies. Our house faces Maple Park. It's a lovely neighborhood. Our back fence is 10 feet away from the back stairwell of that back building. And. I know that the, the police department said that there haven't been significant events back there. But in, in the last 10 years of our 30, it's been un, almost unbearable. We've had things thrown over our fence. Drug paraphernalia. Condoms, you name it. We have to check our backyard before we let our grandkids go in the backyard. So it's a lot, it's, it's, you know, I understand that Officer Ernst borders, right? Borders the Harmony property. But, but I guarantee you his backyard fence isn't 10 feet from 130. Rooms. Full of not just veterans, not just elderly people with medical issues, which I am fully supportive and, and supporting. And, and children, but it's. You know, they're putting lipstick on a pig here, to be honest. I should have my glasses on. We raised our kids to work hard and to give a hand up to someone in need. We get up and go to work every day. You know, to work for what we have, to work for what we need. And I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed that this has gotten to this point. Without us knowing about it. We, we voiced our opposition a year ago, August, when we got wind of this through the county. And we thought, when we heard about Harmony Ridge on Highway 99, we thought problem solved. Fremont Hospital, Bonanza, they finally decided on a good spot for this facility. Until a week ago. And that's when we heard of this. Through rumors. And just received a letter from the city on Wednesday, six days before the council meeting. And today's four days before Christmas. We should be with our families. Not here, sitting through this council meeting, having to defend our property. You know, it's, I think it's wonderful that the city is going to have, be able to sell this property if something goes downhill. this property if something goes downhill. I think it's a hornet's nest from the get-go, to be honest. The location is wrong. But we, as homeowners, aren't going to have that benefit. We're going to take a cut right off the bat in property value because we have to disclose by law that we now have, instead of a hotel 10 feet behind our fence, which used to be a high-quality facility. And my grandparents used to get all dolled up and go to lunch there. You know, I worked for a company that went there for lunches, you know, once a week. It was, it was, you know, a place to be, place to go. And unfortunately, the new business owner is from out of town. He doesn't care about the community. The reason it's, it's fallen, it's in bad condition is because he didn't take care of this, this, this building, this business, because he has no vested interest in this community. So bottom line, we're against this location. And I don't think anything's going to change our mind about the location. And if I could take 30 more seconds. Half of the homeless population in the United States lives in California. 30% of the homeless population in San Francisco came to, migrated to San Francisco after they became homeless. They didn't become homeless because of the housing costs in San Francisco. They came there for the services. They make rational decisions to go where the restrictions are the least and the services are generous. Seattle, 51% of the homeless came to Seattle from somewhere else after they became homeless. So I am the biggest supporter. I, I'll support veterans, you know, till the day I die. Small children, but we have businesses around town that are hiring for $18 an hour. Our daughter and son-in-law have a business in Sacramento. They've been vandalized by homeless multiple times. And it's out of their pocket. And they can't get anybody to come and work. Their employees are demanding upwards of $20 an hour to work in a pizza restaurant. So I don't, I mean, I have a lot of sympathy, but I'm just, my bottom line is this location is not the right location for this.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Patricia Jaeger to come up. And she also has five minutes. And my apologies again for not calling you up first.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Grace, thank you for for taking the time yesterday to come and talk to me. We are not hard-hearted residents opposing Habitat for Humanity. We are concerned by the lack of transparency. This was dropped on us like a bomb a week ago Friday. We thought we had cleared this issue up of our feelings a year ago, August, when we were potentially one of the places where Habitat would be. I'm a strong supporter of Habit. I also work in, with our church, with rest program, feeding the homeless. And, okay, we're considered low density. And if Habitat acquires the Bonanza, we potentially have 240 guests in our backyard. We built 45 years ago. And I can't imagine the negative impact on our neighborhood. The residents of Maple Park have called the YCPD all too often in regards to noise, illegal drug use, loitering, alcohol abuse at the Bonanza, the Old Bride Church and Maple Park. We are surrounded by the less fortunate and it's time to evaluate the direction the city is going. Do we want to center our town? Do we want the center of our town to be a constant reminder of low, or low economy? I would think any new business looking at a new location would have second thoughts for, for a bright future, close to the proposed project. We need to pump up revenue and encourage business growth. It would make more sense in a place where there was planned development, not in the center of Uba City. I'm curious how much stimulus money has been provided to the Bonanza. Stimulus money has been available to restaurants and motels during the pandemic. The Bonanza has been painted in the front section and appears to be a well-maintained building. However, the back, the back building has little or no improvement. We have had broken down cars, RVs with running generators that run day and night. We have dealt with foul and abusive language. We have, have had bottles and cans thrown in our yard and with, with used needles and drug paraphernalia. The north backside wall has been hit by a car or truck and there was a gaping hole for many months. Now there's a patch, no paint. All of our fences were painted white at some point, but have certainly not been maintained. The previous owners gave us permission to plant trees for privacy. For our residents and, and yard, these trees were cut down without notice. Were taken out of, and we were taken out of privacy once again. The trees had been there for approximately 15 years. We have become, we have, we have balconies and stairwells that put, that are put in our, our right facing our property. If this is a bailout for someone who purchased a property in good condition and offered us a substantial amount of money and leaves our community with no attachment whatsoever, we would like the council to review other options. And we've talked about that. It's, it's, I don't think people need, need a handout. They need a hand up. And I think that there are other locations that are better suited. The demands, the Bonanza had a great restaurant, bar, coffee shop, meeting room and convention. All these amenities have disappeared and the, the community cannot support what isn't there. Build it and they will come. Rather than this is the, rather than to think that this is the only option, let's communicate and come up with a better plan to serve our community. This project will definitely have an impact on the value of our property and cause tremendous emotional stress. I invite all council members to our home and view this project through our eyes. Thank you for your time. And we look forward to hearing from you with a different approach. Sorry for the emotion.
Oh, thank you. Next, we'll have the cards from tonight. Louis Rodriguez, three minutes.
Mayor, council members. I'll give it how many vibes, okay? I can only tell you my story. A year ago, I was living in a garage. Somebody broke into the garage, took everything I owned. I'm a Vietnam vet. Okay? I went to the VA, they put me at the Rio. For a little while, didn't like it because I just, I was starting to get sick. I've had three operations in the past six months. One knee, two hips. Okay? Now, they brought me to Harmony Village and I remember Patty. I felt I loved the place. It's safe, it's secure, there's nothing to worry about. I don't see what other negative talk is about it, okay? If I wouldn't be in Harmony Village, I would be homeless. And maybe parked under your house. You're right, no, but no. Harmony Village helped me. It gave me a chance to be safe and to be a productive person once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Gil Sheffield.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Julie Gil Sheffield and I'm a resident of the city of Uba City. This is an issue that's deeply personal to me. I have many very close family members that have been in low-income housing here in this community or are currently on the waiting list. And so hearing that there's over 714 people on the waiting list, I have a close family member on that waiting list. When I look at my father-in-law, who has now passed, one of the things that was most important to him was to have the dignity of being able to stay living independently. And low-income housing provided that. And the residents of the low-income housing, they still are like family to us. In fact, they'll be celebrating Christmas at our house. They go to our kids' performances. They are family, they're, they come to our home. But having availability of housing that they can afford. I think Joseph had tremendous stats about social security and disability. And when you look at that disparity between the cost of housing and the amount of income they have, it is important to provide those options. It's not a surprise that there's inadequate housing in this community. I did go back and look at the agendas and minutes of the city council meetings and the board of supervisor meetings. And I don't see a lot of low-income housing coming forward. I do see, you know, on Hooper Road, there's some housing, not low income. On the James Scott property, there'll be 56 dwellings made, they're not low income. So one of the questions that I would have to this council is what efforts are being made to have a proportion of the housing stock that is being built be low income? And what's the availability of that? And when you look at, you know, our neighbors to the south, like in Sacramento, it will always be cheaper to have nonprofit partners. There was some discussion about whether there could be bankruptcies. Let me remind everybody, cities have gone bankrupt too. So there is a very real possibility of that happening. But when you look at the cost of what Sacramento has now spending on homeless housing, they took a hotel that they already owned and they spent $450,000 to rehabilitate a 250 square foot unit. That's just to rehabilitate it. When you take the numbers of the all-in costs, including the operating, the program and all of that per unit, this is $208,000 per unit to build, renovate and operate. There is a, and that is a much better use of funds. And in reality, these are taxpayer funds that will flow through the state for our community. So I too have questions. I would love to be staying engaged and learning more about it. But I do think that we have a real shortage of low-income housing in this community and housing in general. And so I really applaud the collaborative efforts that Habitat's done. And I look forward to their engagement with, especially with residents living nearby. And if I could, please read a letter that I have from a resident of Maple Park area. Out loud, this is from Doug Smith. May I read that into the record? Would that be okay?
Counsel's discretion. You're good with it?
And then I'll give it to the clerk as well. So, members of the city council, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to share. My name is Doug Smith. I'm the pastor of Hope Point Church in Uba City. I live at 1015 Maple Avenue. Those were reading somebody else's address. We, as a church body, have been partnering with many groups to provide love, support, restoration and basic needs for our homeless population. We understand the many complexities of caring for the homeless. I'm offering my support for the city to allow Habitat to purchase the Bonanza. We've seen the fruit of Habitat's labor as they have made the Uba Sutter area a great place to live. Our church will continue to engage in loving our community and caring for needs. Doug Smith.
Right, thank you. Next up will be Manny Cardoza. And behind him will be Johnny Burke, if you guys want to get queued up.
Mayor, city council. First of all, I just want to let everybody know that I am for affordable housing. My platform, when I ran back in 2016, was to help the homeless and the veterans, which I still uphold today and still try and help this need. But there's the pros and cons of everything. The pros, yes, this is a great program. This is a great thing. Everything's wonderful within that complex, within that community. These citizens, the neighborhoods in this area, they're concerned about the things outside of this complex in this community. So I've heard a lot of stuff, the council's asked a lot of questions. A lot of my stuff has been answered. So the only thing I would like to say is it's a wonderful thing, but it's not the right location. They need to find another spot. This is considered, that is considered the heart of Uba City. And like the lady, the, the person just before me said, we should make it a wonderful hotel and convention center and restaurant once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, and if Mr. Ernst would be queued up right behind him.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Johnny Burke. I'm the executive director for the Sutter Uba Homeless Consortium. I haven't been here in a while. It's cool to see the, the new faces. Congratulations, chief. Congratulations, new city mayor. Our mayor over here, manager over there, new mayor, vice mayor. It's, it's exciting to see you all again. I'm here just on behalf of the Sutter Uba Homeless Consortium because of the affordable housing aspect of this, which everyone understands and recognizes. Mayor, you asked a great question earlier. Why are we talking, why does Habitat partner with a homeless consortium? Why are we talking homelessness when we're talking about affordable housing? Which is it? And if I can just add my two cents to that on behalf, I was at one of our shelters the other night talking to a gentleman. And he's staying in the shelter and I said, hey, he said, hey, can you get me on Habitat's list for that, that place out by Walmart? And I said, well, I'm not in control of that, you know, have you gone there and checked down? And I said, do you have an income? He said, yeah, I get like $1,000 a month. But $1,000 a month doesn't get you anything anywhere unless you can get in one of these projects. If Bonanza was open today, under whatever new village it'll become, for, he would have a spot to be able to stay. So that's where it ties in because as soon as he becomes housed permanently, there's another spot that opens up at our shelter. Should that spot remain open, that allows our law enforcement to be able to do enforcement because there's an option to give to somebody. That's what the Boise case is all about. It's about the fact that people have a right to lay their head somewhere. And so if you want to move them from wherever they're at that they're not supposed to be in violation of one of our ordinances, you have to give them an opportunity. I'm, I'm sure you're all aware of this, but many of the public aren't aware of this. So if we can, right now, in this cold weather and winter shelters, of all of our shelters around here right now, as of yesterday, there was three beds available. So I don't know that law enforcement can go out and do any enforcement in the next couple of weeks unless some spots open up. The more affordable housing we have, the more we can offer for that. There was a suggestion about, can we find a different spot? You know, and those are all great questions. The council should be made aware, as well as the public. And I know that Habitat didn't mention this. 1.45 billion sounds like a ton of money for California and it truly is. But this program's already running. Last week, California announced the first round of awards. They gave out 113 million. This morning, they announced the second round, 105 million. If these keep going like this per week, that 1.45 billion is going to be gone by March. If the council passes on this and doesn't do a resolution at the next council meeting, I believe that this project will be lost and there won't be a second option for Home Key 2.0. Now, good news, the state has talked about having Home Key 3.0 if things continue along, if funding seems safe, but we don't know next year's budget. We have every indication from the governor and legislature, they will continue along with that. But just so you know, if this project should be passed upon, you likely won't have another shot at grabbing 130 units of affordable housing in a, in a quick fashion. So I just wanted to throw those things out there, just to let you know that the homeless consortium supports that because it, it does help the homeless problem. This is not moving people from the streets into housing. Just like Mr. Nicoletti said, there will be people in shelters or at risk. In the last several weeks, we've received many calls. Over the last year and a half since I've been executive director of the consortium, I've tried to put my, my phone number and name out there as much as possible. So if folks had a question about housing or homelessness, they give me a call. I've gotten numerous calls over the last few weeks about apartment complexes that were purchased and got new owners. We had some over in Uba County area where we had a bunch of folks that were served 90-day notices because the apartment complexes no longer wanted to accept Section 8 vouchers. These folks were being evicted, not because of any problems in paying their rent, because they had vouchers, their rent was paid with the previous owner. They had no problems there, they had no write-ups, they had no issues at all, except the new owners wanted to charge more and did not want to accept any voucher programs. So we had calls, I had a calls, I had a call from a mid-70-year-old couple saying, we're at, we've lived in this place for 19 years, where can we go? And I had to say, start hitting Craigslist, start hitting, you've got to be on top of it. It's so competitive, you have to find a place. And unfortunately, regional housing does the best they can, but they issued the vouchers for Section 8. They're not able to find the place for you, you have to go. You have to go out and find it yourself. Habitat works hand-in-hand with Bridges to Housing and Salvation Army and some of our other rapid housing programs to help folks that already have vouchers to get into places. So there's a lot of good opportunities here. I just wanted to share those things with you as you get to make a big decision in a few weeks, and I'm sure that everyone's pulling on your ears right now. But the consortium certainly supports this project and the increased affordable housing. If you read the Appeal Democrat last week, you'll know that regional housing was quoted as saying, we can't build affordable using, affordable units fast enough. Our local economic development commission just recently proposed that, based on projections, we're looking at a 34% increase in population in our area over the next several years. We can't build affordable using units fast enough. So this is a great chance to grab 130 in one quick shot with a great organization. So, looks like I'm out of time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Ernst and Carol Howe, if you want to queue yourself up.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilman and Councilwoman. I live at, my name's Charles Ernst. I live at 1020 Letter A Oswald Road. I think some people have already mentioned my name and where I live and what I do and what I did do. So I was a policeman here for many years. The best thing that happened to our property was Harmony Village taking over the Lexington. The Lexington, I'm going to be a little crude, will have frankly a whorehouse. Half of it prostitutes, and the other half, whatever. There was many a time I was working out in the Walleye Orchard that we own, and it's not uncommon for me to have a young lady walk through my orchard, and it was pretty obvious where she coming from and probably what she was doing for a living, moving from one truck yard to the other, unfortunately. So, and then Harmony Village came in. I was opposed to it, like some of the residents here. We did not want Habitat for Humanity to take that over. But as I got to know them and learned how it worked, and now they've been there about a year, a little over a year, all those problems that we're having are gone. People walking across my Walleye Orchard, unquestionable people are gone. Needles are gone. Homelessness coming through my property, gone. So I don't know what else to tell you, other than I opposed it at first, and now I will never oppose it. My problems are gone. My value of my property has gone up because of very common knowledge, our narcotics unit did many, many raids out there over the years and took down some big-time people out of that motel. Bonanza, I don't know, when I was a policeman, I did respond to Bonanza, but not that much like the Lexington. It sounds like the Bonanza is going downhill. Who is to say some other person is just going to come in from the Bay Area and buy it and let it go down further? You guys are worried about what's going to happen in five or 10 years. You can't predict who's going to buy that motel in five or 10 years. You can't say what they're going to do with it when they buy it. You can't even say what kind of people they're going to let live there when they buy it five years from now, 10 years from now. At least you have Habitat for Humanity. You've got a great reputation. They do. And you know what kind of people they are. I know you're questioning, are they going to be around in five or 10 years? I'm assuming that organization, which has been around 30 years, has had turnover at the top levels many times. So why would they not put another person in there? Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carol?
Mayor, council members. I'm Carol Howe, and I was born and have lived in Uba City my entire life. And I've seen many changes, a lot good, some not so good. I have compassion for the homeless and their struggles. But I also have a great feeling for the longstanding taxpayers who have been here all of their lives. If the project plan for the Bonanza property goes through, many in the nearby area will see their property values decline. There are already problems with the Bride Church and the Maple Park. Is it fair to these long, law-abiding taxpayers to have this in their neighborhood? I would think there would be other suitable locations for the projects instead of the heart of Uba City. I agree with Harmony. I think that's a wonderful location. I think Habitat is doing a great job. I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with this particular location. And as far as Section 8, I have had opportunities to work with them, and I'm sorry to say, it's been a disaster, an absolute disaster. And it's left, all the damage is left to the landowner to repair, and it costs a lot of money. I don't really know what to say, other than the fact that I really am opposed to this location. And I hope that something more suitable can be found, something more like Harmony Village or the one you're speaking of in Uba County. And not be such a decline on the local people that have worked all their lives to build and maintain their homes and, you know, been good, honest people in the community. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Before we open it up to further public comment, we have Sutter County CAO Steve Smith. Would you like to make some comments tonight, sir?
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Steve Smith, County Administrator. I think you've heard from a lot of folks and the county's experience with Harmony Village is that it made a drastic improvement to that area. I know the sheriff wrote a letter of support that maybe was read before I got here or will be read, but it reduced calls from 192 in 2020 until Habitat took over in November to, I think, 27 over the past year. So pretty drastic. As Mr. Nicoletti mentioned, folks going into these type, this type of housing are not the people you see that upset us, that are camping out in front of stores or doing things like that. These are people that have gone through some of the systems that County HHS and the city partner on and take advantage of. We know every place in California is short on affordable housing. The governor, what, 10 years ago, took away redevelopment, and there's a tool we don't have anymore. The hotel, again, yeah, we don't know what's going to happen at the current location, if it will, someone will come in and restore it to its former glory, or if it will stay the same or possibly deteriorate. None of us know that. You've heard from at least three people here, and you've seen that the people that live at Harmony Village are good people, are upstanding citizens, are veterans, or people who are just trying to live their lives. So I do keep hearing people talk about homelessness, and I respect everyone's opinion here, and it would be difficult, you know, if it were going right beside my house too. So I totally understand that, and I'd have to think about how I would feel about that. Though, I would much rather have a Harmony Village-type project by my house than a hotel who I have no idea who's going there, and anyone can go. And sometimes the government puts people up in those hotels, and we, they can have any kind of background, and they get put there. And sometimes we're forced to do it. Whereas in affordable housing, you have good staff who are thoroughly reviewing people and checking on their backgrounds to make sure what kind of people go there and make sure that they're participating in programs. I know one thing we want to avoid as well is, the city of Chico was recently forced into a settlement with a, I believe, CRLA, and in partnership with Uba County, they're being forced to build 350 units. And I know we can't afford that around here to just, out of our own funds, go build that. So that's just my perspective. I think the council asked great, great questions, and it is a tough choice because it is right in the middle of the city, so I really respect you taking this on, and it's a very difficult decision, but thanks for giving me a few moments to talk. Oh, and also, I don't believe the county gave No Cares Act funding to the hotel, so they didn't benefit from any of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. This time, it's open for further public comment. If you would like to make a comment on this, please go to the podium, state your name, address, and we'll, you have three minutes, just line up.
Hello, City Council. My name's Mike Morris. I live on Queens Freeway down the road. We're bound, the part that I don't understand is, is it going to be for seniors or is it going to be for homeless? Is it going to be for senior, seniors that are going to be homeless? Or are we going to open it up and have homeless people with seniors?
So, right now, we have obviously a vast number of individuals who are experiencing homelessness or at risk. What we're finding is the greatest population going into that situation are elderly individuals, as you've seen the individuals living at Harmony Village here today. And there's so many individuals in that experience that, you know, if, we may have someone who's disabled, who may be younger, but the vast majority are going to be veterans and seniors, if not all. I mean, we can't say that, you know, if we serve all the population, there has to be 10 people left. We're not going to try and at least get them into housing, but we're going to prioritize those. And based off the numbers we're seeing, we're pretty sure we can fill up the facility with that situation, because, like I said, with the social security issues that are coming into place, it costs more to rent a place than an elderly person gets on social security in full.
Right. I, it's just, there's both ends of that candle, and I'd hate, I'd hate to have someone that's been living off the streets next door with the, with my grandma. You know, that's the only question I have right now.
Hey, my name's Thomas Burns. I got a question for Joe. Okay. So first of all, I do want to say that it was a while back that the, they built a skyscraper over there on Percy, not Percy, but it, by Richland Housing. Okay, so my office is down the street. I go by there all the time. And there's quite a bit of loitering going on there. When I, I'm always seeing some loitering around there. I never have no time for loitering myself, but that is an issue, you know? People don't like to see people just standing around doing nothing out on the street all the time. But my question for, for you, Joe, is, this is your business. This is what you do, okay? So, and I know this might be deep, and people might not want to take the time, but I was raised in the 1960s, 70s, okay? We didn't have these issues. So being that this is your cup of tea, why don't you tell us why you think we're in this situation today? Because this is a, this, this is an American situation that's despicable, really.
Yeah. You know, I'll be careful on the level of detail, just to be respectful of people's time. But in the 80s, I think 70s, late 80s, they got rid of mental health facilities. There was a big removal of that, and it released a lot of people because they were being this managed. People were being taken to the level of torture in those environments. So they said, hey, no more mental health facilities. We're going to work with people through different types of sources to help them rebuild their lives. And I think that was the thing that started some of that. But I think what keeps precipitating and keeps it going is housing. California, we're talking about other states, sometimes don't have as big a problem with homelessness. Housing in California is extremely expensive, and the amount people generate doesn't cover it. As I kind of showed in my slide, that's taken from direct data, 11,509 people on poverty. That's people who live paycheck to paycheck and could be amongst those, you know, removed from apartments, that people are buying buildings right now. We're seeing a vast number of people entering that. What we're going to see is, we're going to see an increase in chronically homeless people if nothing gets done about this. You know, like you guys were saying, the, you guys are already dealing with this. This is not something that we're going to bring coming there. You guys are already dealing with needles in your yard. You're already dealing with this huge number. And if that building sits derelict another five years, you're going to have another, you're going to have twice that population sitting out there, twice the needles, twice those things, because there's no housing being done to take care of that. If we don't have a place to put people, they just continue to grow. And that's kind of what that situation we're dealing with. So it started with mental health, and it led to lack of housing to continue and perpetuate this. The longer people live in the street, the more they became institutionalized to that way of life, the harder it is to transition them. We leave them for another year, and another year, and another year, the problem gets worse. It doesn't get better.
Next, next speaker, please.
Well, I'm James Burgess. I live at 602 Angely. I share a back fence with Bonanza Inn, and that back fence now is falling down because people lean against it. People that are there, people stand up on the, you know, and look out into my backyard. I've had the issue. In fact, I had Officer Ernst over there dealing with things at least twice that I know of, where people threw beer bottles at my dog, you know? And then also, I'm concerned about the lower property value. You know, how's this going to affect us? Is the city going to compensate us? You know, is Habitat for Humanity going to compensate us for the lower, lower property value? You know, what, what's, what's going to happen in regards to that? We've lived there since 1993, and we have had this issue. The first owners that were there at Bonanza Inn, they did an excellent job. In fact, they were the ones who dealt with the people who threw beer bottles over my fence. They, and as soon as he sold it to these new owners, it went downhill. And I agree. I have no problem, you know, housing people, but I believe this is a bad location. We have just four blocks away, the old buildings of Fremont Hospital that have been sitting there for years, not used. And yet, right now, they just want to jump right in, and we get three days' notice that this is happening? Thanks for sneaking all your, your people over, you know, from the other place. Give them plenty of time, plenty of knowledge, and everything, and give us three days. We appreciate that, okay? And I do have a concern for the homeless. I do have concern. I have great concern, but it needs to be taken someplace where it's not right next door to residents who are paying taxes. That's what we're concerned about.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Mary Lee Bondslett, and I live at 647 Bird Street. So we, we are within walking distance. We're neighbors of these people. My question is, what is the screening process for these residents that are going to come there to live? John Nicoletti, Nicoletti's comments suggested that there is a process, that they go through this step, kind of step-up process. So is that the case for all of these people? In other words, are they already in the system and before they are allowed to live here? And because if that's the case, then they're not being just taken off the street. Because that's, I guess that's our confusion, is that we have a homeless problem in our neighborhood. They are, they're stealing things off of our front porches. I've, I've missed a lot of stuff that was delivered to my house. There is a problem. And I, I want that problem to be taken here, but it doesn't sound like that they're just taken off the street and put into these homes. So that's one question I have. You know, what is the screening process? The other thing, are family units accepted into these places? In other words, will there be children there? Because in the, in the apartments next door that you suggested Because in the, in the apartments next door that you suggested are already low income housing, those are family units. And I, and that's another concern. We are, we are right near King Avenue School. And the, that's a concern. The little children walk to school right past the Bonanza. I mean, their parents walk them, but they're walking past the Bonanza to go to school. And so does this allow for children? Or is it just an adult complex? And, and then I guess my, my other question, and what is the law? Like if I want to sell our home, what is the law regarding disclosing that there is low income housing in our, in our neighborhood?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph, if you could very shortly answer those first two questions. And then the final question is a legal question, which is not of the jurisdiction of, of, of this council. I would suggest talking to a real estate attorney or a realtor to get the proper advice. Joseph, can you answer those questions very quickly?
Yeah, so the process that they go through, they obviously apply for an application. It's typical of homeowner, of any sort of rental housing. The focus is on individuals and couples. So the, the issue is, is there's mostly studios. So we really can't have families living there. It's not appropriate for a kid who's, you know, seven, eight, you know, living in the same room as their parents, things like that. So we keep the focus there. That's, and that's where we see it. The vast majority of our problem is with these elderly individuals. As far as the process, some have been on the waiting list for years. So they go through this process and it takes them a long time. They'll come in every month, make sure their stuff's waiting and they just wait, wait until we can sit through them because there's just so many. So if that answers the questions. I can't say this, I like, we're not into the understanding of like the, the, the real estate element. But we understand that low income housing, I don't think they list it as something that's comparable. There's an apartment complex already next to it. So I don't think they're going to factor in that there's one or two apartments that have low income housing versus it. In my understanding, we do a lot of appraisals and a lot of property purchases and that has never come up.
Any other comments from the public tonight? Yes, Kami.
So my name is Kami and I work in administration at Habitat for Humanity. And I just would be remiss if I didn't really acknowledge the, the residents here that are upset or feel side swiped, as you said, you had three days. The Home Key funding comes out and it comes out really, really quickly. And what, and it's an incredible amount of work on behalf of the nonprofit and the county to do that work that it takes, just like it last time. And so there is, there is a lot of work that happens until we find out, can we count? Is this something that we can do? And now we need to talk to the community. When Charles Ernst was up there, we did actually go into the backyard of those residents and they were just as upset as you are. I, they really were. And we formed a committee and we met with them regularly and let them know that they could express, we're good neighbors. We're going to be good neighbors. Somebody knocked down your fence, not cool. One, that's a violation. They're putting their housing at jeopardy, a housing that they've worked really, really hard to attain. And so when you're saying, how are we calling it a homeless situation? But then we're calling it affordable housing. I think it bounces back and forth a little bit because when we call it homeless, everybody goes, mm-mm, no. We don't want homeless in our backyard. But we are helping the homeless because people are working really hard. Some of them are working really, really hard to change their lives and to get housed. And so when they go through all these steps, affordable housing is normally in communities that has more crime, more drugs than they were used to at the river bottoms. And so they will leave housing and go back to the river bottoms because that's where they feel more safe. Because the communities they can afford to live in, people are not making a choice to have a better life. So that's the really big difference. And I think that's why Charles and all of those community neighbors became such advocates. And I forgot your question, but I really wanted to answer it. And I apologize. And, and people that were homeless, people that are at risk of homelessness, like the, the housing that structured the building that was purchased and didn't want to accept vouchers, that was devastating. There's a post right now going around about the 90 year old woman in Wheatlands whose house was dilapidated. And you have a lot of community members just outraged, right? But that is the homeless people that are being housed there. And so when we come in and people move in, we do put up fences. We, we have rules, they, they can't have visitors at all times. So all of these problems that people were seeing, they actually, they dissipated. We can't promise 100%, but we can promise that we're going to be the best neighbors that we can. And we want to make this community a better place for all of us, 100%. But I understand your frustration, I really do. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kami. We're going to pull this back into the council now as I don't see any other speakers. And I think everybody's had a, yeah, oh, yes, thank you. We're going to pull it back. Is there any online comments?
No public comment.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to pull it back to the council for final comments. Councilmember Harris, would you like to start? Okay, Councilmember Spandola?
No, Mayor, but I thought Thomas had another comment. I don't know if he wanted to or you're good. Okay.
If you could, if you could submit it in writing, we've already been at this for quite some time and you've already talked and spoken tonight, Tom. I would hope be by tomorrow morning because it is Christmas, brother. So, and so with that, the emailed part was in case things came in after tonight's meeting. We were leaving it open until 5 o'clock tomorrow. Since you haven't spoken, would you like to have your three minutes to speak tonight? Okay?
My name is Stephanie Miller and I live on Orange Street. While I do understand everything everyone's saying here, we do, obviously, everyone reiterate that we have compassion on homeless. I feel like our homeless and this situation are two totally separate issues. And I feel like the Bonanza's dilapidated state is a separate issue also. While we as homeowners can't control what is happening at the Bonanza and the state that it is, I believe the city council can. And the vacant property that my house butts up against with the old bride church. We have numerous issues with those and the homeless issues there, the crime and again, the needles. I don't know if putting in a low income housing is going to solve that issue. They talk a lot about the elderly going in there. I would actually like to know what percentage of your people in there are elderly and veterans? We've also heard that they get in there and become productive members of society. Are they being productive because they are having government paying the rent? And what percentage of the rent, they're saying they are paying rent, but what percentage of that rent to that facility is coming from that individual? And what percentage is coming from the government? I actually spoke to someone who runs the unit on Garden Highway. And they expressed to me the only requirement of someone to move into there was to fill out the government housing application and be accepted. There is no further requirements of them after that. They will encourage them to take part of the other things that are offered to them, training to become able to work, any of that. But there is nothing required. So in essence, they can continue to resubmit an application every year for their government housing and have that covered for the rest of their life. So the only requirement from them stating is again, to apply for government assistance. And if they have no income, then that gets covered. So there is, there's no incentive for them to become a productive member. They've talked about the gated community. There's a lot of backlash when homeowners and developers want to build a community and have a gate around it. But yet we're readily agreeing to say, yes, we'll allow you to gate your community. But what about us homeowners that are already there? To keep things out of our community. He talked about the three out of 40 of these projects have got accolades given to them, that they have ran them well. That is a very low percentage. That's not even 10% of these that they're saying are being ran well. So how are we going to say that this one is ran well? Given these I have, you know, we have, everyone says we have a shortage of low income housing. But what percentage of our town do we really want to be low income? If we continue to continue bringing it in and just making more and more because we say there's a shortage due to people not wanting to go get jobs? Some of that is, is very prevalent in this area. We are going to become an entire town of low income housing. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. We will bring it back to the council. And Councilmember Room Garden, do you have any comments?
No further comments.
Vice Mayor? All right, we've had quite the discussion this evening. Lot of good points have been raised. We have a lot of research to do on the part of Habitat to provide us answers, to work with Mr. Moody and his team to bring us back answers. Our email will be open to receive further questions that need to be answered till 5:00 PM tomorrow. That is cityclerk@ubacity.net. I learned it, okay? Please submit those. This, at the latest, so everyone's aware, for it to come back before the council, the latest opportunity it would would be at the next meeting, which is January 18th. So we want to make sure that you are aware during this time. And I think you've already heard this earlier. I know for myself, I fully expect Habitat to take the lead, as they are the lead agency, and reach out to the community and answer the questions. Because we need to evaluate this, this project on its merits. They're a great organization. But the questions come back, is this the right location and the right project for where it's at for our community? And then we've got all, everything else that goes with it. So we're going to work towards answering that question. And thank you all for staying with us during this long session. This was very, very important for our community. With that, our city manager, do you have any comments on this or any direction that you need from us before we go forward? Then with that, we are going to take a five minute recess. And it's 9:02, so we will reconvene at 9:07.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Alright, we'll bring this meeting back to order. It's 9:09, so it gave us an extra two minutes. We will move on to Agenda Item 30. This is a public hearing number three. Consideration of Proposed Maps for District Voting Divisions per California Election Code Sections 110A2 and 110B. And I will turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As you may know, there have been many meetings on this districting item. We are required to do so. We met on September 7th, September 21st. We're in the middle of a series of hearings. This is hearing number, I believe, three that we're doing. There will be two more hearings after this. The goal and intent of tonight is for our demographer, Mr. Robert McIntyre, to present us with some maps that have been produced for the council to take a look at. And what we would appreciate as staff coming away from this is which maps, map or maps are the city council inclined to move forward on? And what order or sequence would they like to hold the elections on? So those are our two main goals tonight. And I will turn it over to the demographer, Robert McIntyre for NDC. Thank you, Robert.
Wonderful. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. This is your your second step in a rather long journey of, you know, redrawing your district lines. And, you know, at the conclusion of the last meeting, we spent most of the time in the last meeting talking about the principles of map drawing. We talked about some of the federal laws. We talked about in having roughly equal population-sized districts. We talked about the fact that we can't gerrymander based on race or voting propensity. We talked about some of those state factors, including the Fair Map Act, and the idea that we need to have contiguous maps that don't bypass neighborhoods to pick one set of voters over another. We try to draw compact maps, meaning as close to a circle as we can. And we say that knowing that we have irregular-shaped territories. We also want to take into mind some traditional mapping characteristics that are allowable, but they're not really spelled out quite so clearly in law. They're just traditional mapping characteristics. And some of those things would include, for example, observing the will of voters in the last election. You know, the voters put you in office. To the extent we can draw maps that allow the voters to determine your fate as elected, we want to do that rather than have the demographers pen do that. But we have to, that would be a third-tier factor. So federal tier first, state tier, then those third-tier factors. And so with that in mind, we, with National Demographics, drew some maps for the council. It was my understanding from from District Council that the district's attorney, the city's attorney, that there were no maps submitted by any of the community members. So tonight we have three maps by National Demographics and one directed by the council for discussion. The first map we have up here tonight is actually, I'm going to go a little bit out of order. We'll talk about the green map. And we do have a web viewer, so we have the ability to really drill in if there's very specific questions about a particular area or street where dividing lines are. We can do that with the web viewer, but this is probably the cleanest to look at. The green map, you might recall, one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was that you can, you're going to have a population deviation. You can't draw perfect maps. But we need to make sure the difference between the highest, most overpopulated district and the lowest, most underpopulated district does not exceed 10% population deviation. And so when we look at the green map, the green map has a population deviation of 5.04%, well within the federal guidelines. In this particular case, Districts 3 and 4 have the ability to, to, for protected-class voters, to attain a plurality. And this happens because when we looked at some of your protected-class voters in the demographic data, we see that, for example, in your total population of Latinx voters, it's 31% of your total population. And African-American, Asian-Americans are 23% of your total population. And so because you don't have a larger proportion of your, of town that has a larger or either a larger majority of one of the protected-class voter groups, or they're not living in neat little pockets. In fact, one of the things we noticed when we looked at where people live within your city boundaries is that people are very well spread out. And that would be something actually to celebrate. But what it means is I can't draw you a district where you're going to have a majority Asian district or a majority Latino district in this case. And of course, African-Americans are about 3% of the total population. So we couldn't get to a majority in any one district with African-Americans either. But part of the goal of the California Voting Rights Act is to make sure that historically marginalized voters have the ability to elect the person of their choosing. And so in this case, we see that with District 3 and District 4, looking at the citizen-voting age populations, we see that the protected-class voters could form a coalition and have a majority in those two districts. Now, looking at the way this map is drawn, you see that the north side of town is divided by Districts 1 and 2, and really uses Highway 20 and Highway 99 as typical guiding lines. There's a little bit of balancing on the east side of town with District 1. That's a population balance kind of jutting down, but really doing the best we can to follow those major arteries as dividing lines. As I said before, District 4 in this particular map has the highest population, Asian citizen-voting age population of 34%, while District 3 has a 33% citizen-voting age Latinx population. In this particular map, we have two council members paired in District 2. Moving on to the purple map. The purple map has a population deviation of 5.74%. This shows a slightly different way that we can draw the southern part of town, Districts 3, 4, and 5, so it's just a slight derivation from the green map in that regard. Still meets all the same legal requirements. In this case, District 4 has the highest Asian population of 34% citizen-voting age population, while Latinx and African-Americans are relatively evenly distributed, not not able to achieve plurality or majority in any other district. In this map, we also have two council members paired in District 2. This is the final map prepared by NDC. And so this map has a population, the orange map has a population deviation of 5.34%. This is wildly different for the purposes of being wildly different. You saw on the first two maps, you know, there were, we followed those kind of traditional street boundaries and major dividing lines in town, as you might expect. This map was attempting to provide an alternative. It still meets the legal requirements, though it weighs a little less heavily on the major dividing lines or major street boundary areas as the first two maps do. And so really, this map was generated probably more for discussion purposes, so people could see what could be done. When we look at this map, we see that we have very similar numbers. District 3 has a Latinx 34% citizen-voting age population, while District 4 has a 32% Asian citizen-voting age population. What this map probably does the worst is observe the will of the voters in the last election. It pairs council members in two separate districts. We have four council members paired in two districts. And so really not paying much attention to the will of the voters in the last election. Not an absolute legal requirement under federal-state laws, but it is a traditional districting requirement. And to the extent that we weren't able to draw a third map that really observed that as well as the first two, I wanted to point that out. Then there was a question about whether or not it was possible to draw a map that kept all the council members separate. Certainly, we can draw a map, but this map has has concerns with the Fair Maps Act. And so, and that has to do with the way we're dividing up Districts 3, 4, and 5 down in the South, specifically around what I would call the horseshoe where District 5 is. It would, you know, there could be different arguments made. And given the state of affairs with, you know, a lot of attorneys who are looking to put their name on the Citizen Voting Rights Act, I think this makes a good discussion map. And certainly it can be used for arguments about potential changes to any of the other three maps. I necessarily wouldn't suggest that the council consider moving forward with this particular map due to concerns for the Voting Rights Act. And so with that, the goal tonight is really to hear from the public. So that way the council can then weigh in. And then after you've had the public hearing, I would hope to hear from council, ideally with the goal that we would narrow down to one or two maps to move forward or one or two maps with potential changes to move forward for the next meeting. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And I believe it's not queued up for me. We have to open a public hearing, correct? Thank you. So with that, I will open the public hearing. And we will see if there are any questions from the public at this time. And we do have a card. Heather Ashman.
Evening again. We have people here tonight. Isn't that nice? The last time we did this, I was sitting here, I was sitting here alone, I think. So during the county process, I spent a lot of hours trying to put a map together. I was actually successful in increasing the the size of District 4 to include a levy and more of the county. There was a lot of reasons for that. But I tried putting a map together for the city, and I just, there are so many corners, there are so many things that you have to consider. It was really hard not to try to be able to improve on green or purple. I want to point out something about the demo map. And I think that, I don't know what his name is, was presenting here. If you want to try to avoid the look of gerrymandering, I think that that would be kind of a questionable map, considering it basically separates all sorts of communities. Clearly, the South is underrepresented in any of these maps. As you can see, the southeast in particular has no representation in the current city council or in that one in particular, because it would be easy to have somebody from the higher, from the more northerly sections take over. It also has a 7% deviation on the population than other maps, which all of them have 5%. And the reason why that's important, because this was discussed in the other meetings, is that you want to be able to avoid having to redraw your maps between censuses. Because if it gets, if it's 7%, it would be very easy if one of the communities were to start to develop. And we know that there's some development interested, interest in some of these areas to the South, that it would go over that 7% and get up to 10%, which would practically force you to redraw the map. So you need to make them as close as possible at this time as you can in case that's some sort of an impact during the development between now and the next 10 years. Orange was also very odd, has odd crossings of 99. It splits school areas and it splits communities very clearly. Green and purple seem to be the only ones that have a, if you look at that one, you can see what, purple looks a bit odd, but that one still works. That one's the purple one, right? But anyways, the purple and the green seem to have the most congruent rule, you know, as far as the rules that the communities kind of together. 99 really splits up pretty much a lot of the communities. But you're always going to have somebody in the middle. We have the same problem with the county maps. You're always going to have somebody that's in the middle that doesn't have any county at all. There's nothing you can do about it. Yeah, I just wanted to say, please be transparent. Don't be expedient. I know there's a map that will let you all stay in office. I get that. At first, I was going to say, I would hate to have to lose either Mr. Harris, Councilwoman Harris, or Councilwoman Boomgard, because you end up in the same district. But please don't be expedient. Please think of the community and think of transparency. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thomas Burns. I, I've heard about this, but I haven't had a chance to really look into it at all. So maybe you can clarify for me. Is this redistricting thing, is this going to be where we vote, like right now, when we vote for the city council, we vote, I think there's three people that run or something like that, or three offices. But is this going to be like, I live in District 1, I'll have to vote just for that little area and whoever is living in that area?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Mike Morris, Greens Freeway. So, and I just want to bring this up because it's only obvious to me. So, and we can't do anything about it, but we're going to have to remap if we ever get to Keyhole. Keyhole is what everybody's kind of arm wrestling over. But in that one, it looks like at least three members are going to be able to get feedback from all, from the Keyhole area as well. Right? Since there's purple, green, and gold, it looks like to me, all three of those city members, council members are going to be able to get feedback from residents that live in there and everything. So that would be kind of a plus for that, for those people.
Would either a city attorney or you sir like to address what would happen if we annex the Keyhole area or any other areas to help him understand what would go on with the maps?
Absolutely. Wonderful question, and you bring up a great point. And I probably could, given how long the meeting had gone with the first item, I didn't want to put people to sleep at the end of the night. One of the factors that, probably the most important factor when we draw districts is relatively equal population. And so we can have no more than a 10% variance between the highest overpopulated district to the lowest underpopulated district. And the reason we have to redraw lines every 10 years is specifically to account for changes in population, whether it be people moving within the boundaries or even annexing properties or new development. And so while some jurisdictions may make the choice to slightly underpopulate an area, a district they know is going to grow, you're still limited by that 10% total cap. And so if you have, for example, if you were to build a new senior center or a major housing development, you can never account for that in one go. And which is why you have to redistrict in 10 years. There is no provision for doing a mid-year adjustment to true-up, because the federal courts have held that using the discentennial census data is defensible. Okay, thank you. And trust me, I'd love the city to get to Keyhole.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, any online?
No public comment.
Any comments from the council? This is, this is for questions and directions, so it's back to the council. So. Yes.
Through the, through the mayor? Okay, so if we're going through the maps, I'm going with purple and/or green. And whichever scenario sequencing would best accommodate either of those maps.
Let's remember Harris.
We're seeking input here through the mayor. I'm liking purple or green myself. I think if I had to choose between one of the two, I like purple. And I will admit that the sequencing has me a little bit confused, more than a little bit confused. I know that Wade and I are up in three years. You three are up in one. But that's all I really know. The charts and things, are we supposed to pick a sequencing scenario here? And it's the hypotheticals we're choosing from?
There are, the, I've given you confidential sequencing items as to how various combinations could work out.
Oh, my, my bad.
No worries, but there are recommended ones from the demographer as well. So if, for example, if you're inclined to go with the purple map, it has a sequencing that would be legally acceptable and would not create impermissible gaps in the city council. So if you were inclined to do the purple map, for example, I think you mentioned, you could look at that sequencing and say the purple map with the sequencing that's suggested.
And I guess that's where I got confused, is because the sequencing appears to be identical on both purple and green.
One of the reasons for that is because where the terms fall between the three versus the two and the at-large terms versus the districting terms, we don't want to end up in a situation where we only have four council members or three council members because of the timing of when the elections are held. So if the council can give us direction tonight, I've heard two maps mention the purple and green. The demographer and I can actually work and come back at the next meeting to show you how that sequencing could work in various sorts of ways. So it could give you additional information on that if you wanted. Because once it's narrowed down, we have, we can run through scenarios better.
With the, just to expand very briefly, for those who aren't professional electeds, essentially, it's important to recognize that no term will be shut, cut short as a result of moving to districts. And so, for example, anybody who's in the 2022 election will be elected to their by-district seat, while the remaining council members stay at large until their, until their election date in 2024.
I think with that being said, I would, I like the purple map and the associated sequencing, just to get us started here. Thank you.
Councilman Esmondola?
Purple or green are fine by me. I think I was looking at green. Just because it seemed like, uh, on the purple map, District Three was kind of plunging southward. It seemed like Districts One, Three, and Five were a little bit, um, I guess, in my mind, just a little bit more linear. But either one of those is fine by me, and I would agree with Councilman Harris. The sequencing of one, two, three on either maps is my preference.
Right, thank you. Councilman Esmondola?
Um, I'm in agreement with green or purple. And so if we can bring some sequencing back to that, I mean, the sequences there and the actual rule out of that would be great.
Thank you. My comments on this is I too like the green or the purple. My first choice would be green. It does just seem to flow naturally more with the city. And then the suggested sequencing that you've suggested, one, two, three for both of those would be my recommendation. And um, I think that's really all that we need. I think you've got some direction from here with everyone seems to like the green and the purple. And it seems like I heard maybe three green preferences.
Green is fine with me, too.
It looks like we're leaning green. So.
No, through the mayor, nobody leaned green. We were saying purple and green, three of us. And Sean mentioned purple, and you mentioned green.
That's what I'm trying to, I think. He preferred green, I preferred green.
And I'm clear.
Green's fine with me, too.
Green and purple.
Okay, so with the suggested sequencing.
Yep.
Okay? And.
Through the mayor. So, if we're understanding correctly, we will prepare a map for green with the suggested sequencing. We can also provide alternative sequencing to see how that looks for you. We will put out a notice ahead of the meeting of January 18th, which is next council meeting. It will be in Spanish and hopefully Punjabi as well, so that the public will be aware of it and get that published out at least seven days ahead of time, so everybody's aware of what's happening. We will include a, if we can, a copy of the green map on it, just so people have a general idea what it looks like. Of course, it's going to be a little bit hard to see in the newspaper, or at the very least a link. And then we will also provide you with some sample sequencing, how it will look under green. But um, we can then come back, and then if you like what you see, uh, we can introduce it by ordinance. So there'll be two readings. It'll be the first reading at the next meeting. If you like what you see. If you want to change something, we need to renotice and redo another first reading. So I think that's the direction we have from the number of nods that are going around the city council. Robert, did you have any additional questions?
No, no, that would be the the best ultimate conclusion. So we'll bring back the two maps with with all the potential uh, sequencing. So we'll give you two or three versions of green, two or three versions of purple with the right sequencing. So you'll just pick the one you like, introduce the ordinance, and move forward.
I I think they had just green, unless I'm hearing. So we bring back just the green map. Am I correct, council?
Is that where we're leaning as a council?
Well, I saw four, four greens.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not good at counting, but I usually can get.
Kind, green, green, green. We're good.
Okay, so we'll do the green, if that's okay with the city council, because then it helps define things a lot more for the purposes of staff as well. Thank you so much, council.
Thank you. Is anything else you need from us tonight, sir?
No, thank you. I appreciate the clear direction.
Okay, thank you for sticking around with us and being here tonight. I appreciate it.
A great learning opportunity.
With that, I will close the public hearing. We will move on to Agenda Item 31, UBA City Purchasing System Ordinance and Purchasing Policies Update. Mr. Morrison?
Okay, um, I'm really glad I chose the color scheme of green and purple in my presentation tonight. With this item, um, I do want to thank all the work put in by Public Works Analyst Scarlett Harris, uh, who was unable to attend and present tonight, but Scarlett did a fantastic job putting this together and caring for the work of Finance and Public Works from, this has been in the works for about two years. Perfect, thank you. Mini-code and and policy was last updated in 2008, and this was, came after a reorganization of a prior city manager. Ideally, um, we wouldn't wait 15 years to redo a policy update, but that's what's happened. That's what's occurred. And so, um, with that, uh, that update, um, the city saw a bidding threshold doubled from 25,000 to 50,000. Decentralized purchasing was not changed in the code itself. Uh, staff reviewed the current policy, received feedback from departments, vendors, and other agencies. We were seeking to streamline without ceding the important control of purchasing. And we also, uh, uh, were looking for clarifying language in the, in the policy and in the code. We were able to restructure the guidelines for different purchases and organize for ease of navigation, adjust dollar thresholds, which again, after 15 years, the dollar thresholds hadn't changed at all. And we were able to define decentralized a little bit better. Um, we were able to come up with a better definition or to better explain public contract code, vendor relations, formal bids, sole source justifications, and the way we evaluate bids, inspect specifications. The changes to the authorization thresholds are on the slide. I think I made those big enough to see. And you can see what the current limits are now. Uh, we're, we're doing small purchase orders for all purchases less than $1,000, and we would raise that to 5,000. Department heads now have discretion for $5,000, and uh, and we're proposing to raise that limit to 25,000. Finance Director myself has discretion, and I, I sign off on all purchases that are up to between 5,000 and 25,000, and we're proposing that that number go to 50,000. City manager signs off on all purchases between 50,000 and 25,000 and 50,000. We're proposing that that goes to 100,000, and council currently today sees all purchases over $50,000, either at the beginning of the year or throughout the year in staff reports. We're proposing to change that number to over $100,000. There are exceptions to procurement requirements, and we're just making sure that we are outlining that well and better in the in the, uh, the current code and policy. These are not departures from what we're currently doing, but we just are trying to define them better. With professional services, uh, there's really no competitive requirement, but it is recommended. Public projects are all subject to public contract code. Uh, there is a direct pay list that Finance has been maintaining for many years. I think this goes back to 2003, 2004. So for unique procurements, uh, such as checks, uh, payments to other governmental agencies, um, banks, utilities, and dues and subscriptions, uh, where it just doesn't make sense to necessarily encumber the funds and create a purchase order. And then we also, um, just reiterate that piggybacking from other agencies' formal bids is an acceptable, acceptable method of procurement. Recommendation is to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter Six of the Title, of Title Two of the UBA City Municipal Code by title only and waive the first reading, and then be adopt a resolution adopting the purchasing policies and procedures manual update to become effective concurrently with the proposed ordinance. May I answer your questions?
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any questions from the council? All right, any questions from the public? Okay, any online?
No public comment.
Then I will bring it back to the council for action. Have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Morrison. We will move on to Item 32, UBA City Waste Water Collection and Treatment Ordinance Update. Slangy?
Thank you. Before I move on, I just want to say you made a lot of staff very happy with that last item. That's probably one of the biggest complaints that we get is related to particularly the, uh, the small PO threshold. So, um, we have a lot of excited people tomorrow. All right, so the item before you is the Waste Water Collection and Treatment Ordinance Update. Uh, for background, this is Title Six, Chapter Six. Uh, water regulations was updated in November 2019. Staff has identified similar need to update the wastewater ordinance to match some of the changes, and it was last updated in August 2016 to incorporate the rates that were approved through the Prop 218 process. There are two major additions proposed as part of this ordinance update, one being city enforcement options, and then two being wastewater fees financing. And then there's some minor clarification grammatical edits. So many of the edits are minor clarification, language changes, or codification of practices already implemented by council action or daily operations. There's a lot of situations that come up day to day related to individuals wanting to connect to, to the wastewater system, and the code, um, doesn't necessarily address it. So as we updated this, we thought back to what are those questions that we get to try to address those. And then again, the two major updates that are proposed related to city enforcement options and wastewater fees financing. So the enforcement options, um, ownership of the service lateral and maintenance of the service lateral. So the identified issue is a property owner that's unwilling or unable to repair the service lateral damage or malfunction. And so the enforcement measure is the ability to repair and charge the property owner with failure to reimburse tied to the judicial enforcement remedies and penalty provisions. With that, um, we're also working on a program that will come before council to be able to assist property owners with repairing their sewer lateral. Because we get into situations where property owners are unable to pay for that, um, that repair, and it's a, it's a health and safety issue. And so, um, we want to be able to have enforcement measures, but also we want to be able to figure out a program to be able to assist people if they are unable to do that. Uh, the second item is separate sewers. So right now, we're unable to require old shared service laterals to be separated. You can imagine sewer lines were installed 100 years ago. It's one lateral that's going to, um, several buildings. And so with this, once the, uh, the lateral fails, this would require that the buildings separate and have separate sewer laterals going to each building. With private sewer lines, no infiltration or leaks. Right now, the city's unable to prevent ongoing infiltration, leaks, or public health risks caused by private service laterals. So again, this would be addressed through the nuisance abatement ordinance where we could, um, enforce and encourage residents to fix those laterals, and again, have a program in place to assist with financing of that. And then item, the fourth item down, fats, oils, and grease, or what we love to call FOG. This would give us the ability to make people comply with our FOG program. In regard to wastewater fee financing, um, in 2019 with the water ordinance update, we, uh, provided a provision for property owners to be able to finance their connection fees. And so with this ordinance update, they would be able to also finance their wastewater connection fees. It adds the connection extension fees to property taxes via a 10-year lien. There is an interest rate assigned to it. It keeps the upfront cost of wastewater connection from being prohibitive. And so you have properties out there that are currently on a septic system. They come get a quote from the city to connect to city water or sewer. It's a pretty significant upfront cost, and so through this program, they have the ability to finance it through the city. Those agreements would come to council for approval, and so you would be aware of those situations. And then, um, with that, the recommendation is to introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of UBA City to amend Chapter Five of Title Six of the UBA City Municipal Code and waive the first reading. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Burns?
Thomas Burns. I'm getting mailers all the time from a company that's trying to get you to pay for an insurance program. Okay, but what is the average cost, okay, to, you're talking just sewer line, right? Not, not your main water line?
So this, this, um, what this would cover is when you go to connect to city, the city sewer line, you pay connection fees, which pays for your share of the wastewater treatment facility and the large diameter trunk lines that transport the sewage to the wastewater treatment facility. You also pay extension fees if the sewer line already fronts your property. That pays for your half of the sewer line that's directly in front of your property. So this isn't actually constructing the lateral in terms of this financing program. This is to pay for the fees that you would owe the city just to be able to connect. In terms of the, um, the modifications for city enforcement options, this would apply to the lateral that goes from the sewer main to the house. And we run into situations periodically where property owners have a failing lateral, and they either don't want to repair it because it's costly, or they're unable to repair it. And so we get into difficult situations where, um, you know, we're very limited in what we can do through this ordinance update. We'll have the ability to repair it if we need to, and then either um, backcharge the property owner and work with them to come up with a, a payment plan, or through this other program that we'll be proposing, where they could apply for financing to assist with that as well.
So do you have an average cost for both of those situations? I'm just curious.
Um, for the connection fees, uh, my recollection is those are about $8,000 right now for the connection fees. Extension fees are in the range of, I think, approximately about $55 a lineal foot, so the frontage of your property times that extension fee. But it's so, for somebody to connect to city wastewater, um, if they have, you know, a 100-foot lot, you're looking in the range of 13,000 plus, 13 to 15,000 dollars. And that's before you actually go dig into the street to actually construct the lateral if you need to. Some subdivisions, the lateral is already stubbed out, and so, you know, that's, they don't have to pay for that. But it's a pretty significant upfront cost if somebody, and then in addition to that, to pay to abandon their septic system. The lateral, it really depends upon where it's at and what it is. So some where we see a lot is the connection to the city main. It's failed over time where it actually just like disconnects. And so you can imagine that's out in the middle of the street. Depending upon the depth of the main, it could be anywhere from five feet deep to 15 feet deep. And so bringing, it has to be a Class A contractor that comes out and makes that repair. And so that's going to be, you know, say it's in the middle of a boulevard, that's a very costly repair compared to it's a, um, crack in the pipe due to a tree root that's on their property. You still have a lot of issues with water getting into the sewer line, which impacts us. But from a cost perspective, it could be much less because it's really going on doing a spot repair within the yard. So it really varies.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any comments online?
No public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
First time to make a motion in a year. I'd like to introduce an ordinance, or make a motion to approve introducing an ordinance amending Chapter Five Waste Water Collection and Treatment of Title Six of the UBA City Municipal Code by title only and waive this first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Slangy, you're still there. Bridge Street Widening Project, uh, 21 dash 01.
I want to acknowledge Kevin Bradford that's watching, participating virtually right now. He's very disappointed that this is taking him away from the Hallmark Christmas movies and the baking challenge. I told him I would really like to be watching those right now, but, um, in all seriousness, it's Kevin and his team that have put this project together, and I'm just presenting the project. But I'm very excited. Bridge Street Widening, the project we've all been working on and waiting for for years, is finally before us for approval plans and specifications. And so we're proposing to widen Bridge Street from Gray Avenue to Cooper Avenue. Um, the project includes, uh, two travel lanes each direction, raised landscape medians with double mast arm, decorative streetlight poles, landscape park strips, on-street parking with Class II bike lanes, decorative traffic signals, ADA accessible sidewalks and high-visibility crosswalks, a concrete block wall along the north side with provisions for future artwork, and then driveways for future access to development. and then driveways for future access to development of the city's vacant parcels on the north side. And so here's an exhibit, very difficult to tell at this scale, but here's Gray Avenue. Um, here's Clark Avenue. Here's Cooper Avenue. The widening is occurring on the north side, which is why the city purchased all of the properties on the north side. There's a block wall that will separate the residential properties from the, uh, roadway. And again, two travel lanes each direction, a planter median. You have, uh, the double-headed streetlights, poles in the median. And in terms of the landscaping, it'll match the theme of the landscaping on Bridge Street east of Cooper. So low maintenance, um, but very visually attractive. And then the high visibility crosswalks. So with council approval of the plans and specifications tonight, we'll advertise for bids. Open bids in January, um, award a contract, uh, February through March. So once we open bids, you know, we analyze the bids, um, determine who's the apparent low bidder and then, uh, once council awards the contract, we have to go through the process of actually executing the contract, which if it's not a contractor we've worked with before, that can take some time. If it is somebody we've worked with, then it can go a little bit quicker. Anticipated start of construction, April twenty twenty-two with completion in December twenty twenty-two. So this, the schedule you can see is, it's, it's aggressive. So I just want to set expectations for people. When you're driving around, Bridge Street is not going to be an option for driving around. The contractor is going to need to get in there, do underground work right away. And then they will start, um, literally it's a full reconstruction of Bridge Street. So demo and then building the new, um, roadway. So very significant in terms of impacts to the community, the Bridge Street, major travel thoroughfare, the, the residents along the, uh, north and south side. The contractor will work with them to make sure that there's ingress and egress to the properties. But likely you will see lane closures, if not, you know, full closure of segments during, uh, different aspects of the construction. Um, this is a large project and so staff has issued a request for proposals for construction management and inspection services. When we constructed the bridge project, it was extremely beneficial to have an onsite, uh, construction uh, inspector and, and project manager, um, and that helps with keeping things moving. And then labor compliance services will be administered by a consultant. The total estimated project cost is just under seven point two million. One of the things that we did is we had a separate third party actually review the plans and specifications for constructability. We wanted to know, you know, what are the pitfalls that are particularly in there that we need to address? And then we also looked at the estimate. The construction costs have been all over the place and, and, um, material costs have been really high. So right now we're at seven point two million. This includes a ten percent construction contingency, ten percent construction admin inspection fee and one percent design services during construction. If you recall, we received a two point eight million dollar grant through the CTC for this project. There's currently five point six million dollars in the account, but we do have other funding available to add to this, this project account to get us to where the, um, we're expecting the bids to come in. The alternatives is do not approve the plans and specifications. However, there are, um, strings to that CTC money. We have to award the project by June of twenty twenty-two or you could direct staff to modify the plans and specifications. With that, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specs for the Bridge Street Widening Project and authorizing advertisement for bids on the project. And again, I can't give enough accolades to Kevin Bradford and his team because, uh, this is, this project's been long in the making. We're all very excited to have it before council tonight.
Thank you. We'll bring you to the council for questions.
I have a quick question.
Sir.
Slangly, the, the little park there at Cooper on the north side? What, what's the plans for that? I know you're.
Well, you could talk to Brad, um.
I see him lingering.
Yeah, you can see on here, we have a meandering sidewalk.
Okay.
That goes through the park. Um, there's the potential that this vacant property could be converted to a parking lot. It could be converted to some type of smaller use so that you can have better utilization of this park. This park's not very utilized now. I know that, um, Brad has been having discussions with different folks about potential options for this park. And so you might want to come up here and add to it. But in terms of this particular project, it will be, the way it'll be finished is that it'll have, uh, this meandering sidewalk and then you'll have the curb and gutter right here and then decorative traffic signals at the intersections.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council?
Um, sir. No questions, sir. However, you, Diana, it's unfortunate. Here we are a couple of days before Christmas at ten o'clock at night with this announcement. I feel like we need champagne and confetti involved or something.
Yeah. We'll, we'll do that when we award it.
Yes, but, uh, regardless, uh, kudos to everybody to get us to this point. It's looked very impressive and thank you very much, Kevin, if you're listening or watching. So that's it. Yeah. Or baking, you said?
Holiday baking championship. That's my favorite.
Nice, Mayor. Councilmember Spella. Alright, we'll go to the public. Any comments from the public? And you're right, I have your card. I have a couple of cards. Alright, so are you Crystal?
I am.
Crystal.
Good evening. Um, I own the house at eight sixty-four Morley, which is, um, two houses in from the corner of Clark. Um, I'm currently on that map as we speak. Uh, this is the first illustration that I've seen that includes everything. So it is good news that I'm seeing a brick wall. It, I think that a barrier would be nice. Um, however, that does leave a large gap between my current back fence and a wall blocking all view. So I am concerned for the security of my, my area as that may increase the opportunity for homeless. I hate to even mention it. Um, or just the, it's going to be a very closed-off area where um, anyone can, um, access my property in a much easier way than had before when there was homes at that area. Um, I would just ask that some consideration would be taken for the individuals that are currently residing on that block that it's a very quiet neighborhood. Um, uh, we, we enjoy living there very much, um, and we hope to continue to do so. The ideas of parking lots and things of that nature don't actually sound very appealing to someone who is living um, and enjoying their backyard on the opposite side of it. So just from that standpoint, I just wish for some consideration. That's really it.
Alrighty, thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can, so I could take it you're on the east side of Clark Avenue? This way?
Yeah.
Over on this side? Okay. So with this, the block wall will be right up to the property line? It will be. And then this becomes surplus property in which the city would go through the process of finding interested, um, potential projects for that surplus property. We've had a lot of discussions about what that could potentially be. It could be like little cottages where you could have, you know, a salon or an accountant or something like that. Or it could be some type of um, mixed-use facility, but the block wall will actually be right up to the property line. So you won't have a space between your fence and the block wall.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. You're welcome. Yeah, and on your side, um, the parking lot I was talking about was more specific to kind of this area and it wouldn't be, it would be more so to allow people to access the park if we were to do that. This side would be most likely some type of development.
Alrighty, thank you. Uh, Ian Gaddis?
Yeah, uh, Ian Gaddis. I also live at eight six four Morley. Um, I guess my question was mostly answered, but I was more wondering the height of the wall? If there's any right now?
I believe it's either six feet or eight feet. We'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at what the noise study showed, but it's either six feet or eight feet.
Okay. And, um, I think the, uh, there's going to be art painted on that, on that. I'm guessing the south side of that wall?
There's provisions that we could do artwork in the future. So as part of the project, there won't be like painting of the wall or art. But it's a great canvas in the future to be able to beautify that corridor. And so we wanted to be able to provide provisions that we could do something like that in the future.
Okay, because I was just wondering maybe what, what would the response time be in the meantime to the graffiti that's going to most likely be on there? Because there's already graffiti on the fence.
Yeah, um, so Y C three one one, we have the city app, Y C three one one. If you submit graffiti through that, our staff's pretty quick to go out and address it. The other thing that we can do is put a anti-graffiti coating where it makes it harder for the paint to stick, which makes it easier for us to get the paint off. It does require reapplication after you clean it, but, um, there are a lot of things out there that you can do to try to mitigate that staining that you get when people graffiti the walls.
Okay. Alright, and I think that was all my questions. Alright. Very well put together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around.
Yep, long night. Hey, we're going to be like Mr. Burns. We're going to celebrate Christmas together here in about another seventy-two hours. So any other questions or comments from the public? Is there any online?
No public comment.
Alright, then I'll bring it back to the council for action.
The mayor.
Sir.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the plans and specifications for the Bridge Street Widening Project twenty-one dash oh one and authorizing advertisement for bids on the project.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item thirty-four, the Harder Parkway Park Project Award. Mr. McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. And Merry Christmas. The, um, while Sarah's pulling this up, uh, when, uh, Diana was just giving her presentation, Mrs. Langley, we, uh, the Park and Rec Commission, um, is looking at Morley Park and for uses, uh, to happen after that project is complete. Thank you. And then, um, and there's been a variety of discussions, uh, from different commissioners, actually, and, and different interested citizens. I think one of the things we'll do is that we're going to survey the area of citizens that live, residents that live in that area. And kind of throughout a couple of options, you know, certainly there is a, a pocket park, uh, that's certainly smaller. Uh, there's been discussions of a dog park, which is probably a good location for that, um, since there's only one in UVA City. Um, but so we're just going to kind of look at different, uh, options and certainly bring them before council before a, for a decision at some point. So moving forward and why I'm here this evening, um, is that, uh, this is another, uh, project that has been, uh, developing a long time. As council is fully aware, you know, you adopted five priorities at the beginning of the year. And this item, uh, certainly falls under the, uh, quality of life. And that project is, is the request to develop a new park, uh, on Harder Parkway. I'm going to read this once because I think I have to. And I know that sitting over there, uh, you can't see the, the, um, not sitting over there where Mrs. Langley is, but when you're on TV land, you can't see the recommendations. So here we go. Uh, staff is requesting to adopt a resolution, uh, which makes the following actions. Awarded construction contract to Marina Landscape Incorp of Orange, California with the amount of their total bid of two million, five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-nine cents and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city, subject to review and approval as to legal form by our city attorney. Second, to award a construction contract to America Ramp Company, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and one dollars and fifty-seven cents through Sourcewell Contract Number one, one, two, four, two, zero, dash, A R C with the finding that is in the best interest of the city and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the bike park. Also awarded contract for construction and inspection services to Coastland Civil Engineering Incorp of Auburn, California in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city, subject to review and approval as to form by the city attorney. Authorized, last one. Authorized the finance director to make necessary appropriations from the American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of one million, two hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-seven cents to C I P account nine, four, one, two, zero, seven, dash, six, five, five, zero, one, uh, in order to bridge the funding shortfall and ultimately fund the park project located on Harder Parkway. This is a location map, obviously defining it is between Buick House Road and Highway twenty. If you look to the west, uh, of the park, you see Sutter Bike Path. This is going to be the park, uh, a gateway to the Sutter Bike Path as well. I'll talk about the components and how we have addressed uh, what we anticipate to be a high use of just, um, the access point to the Sutter Bike Path. So to be um, a little bit more specific, as I talked about the bike path, um, as you come into the park off of Harder Parkway, you have approximately four hundred, four, forty-two parking spots, not four hundred and twenty. And you have a bathroom located there. And then on to the west, you've got a pavilion area. And then as you work around the park, we have, this access would take you to the Sutter Bike Path. Uh, you have within the park itself, a bike park, which I'll get more specific on. A continuous walking path that is well lit. And then you get to the exercise fitness area uh, to the north of the park, a full-court basketball court as you come around, and then typical play equipment. Those are just some more amenities, uh, that will be in the park as well. In what I talked about, the pavilion area, these are components that will be in the pavilion area. Um, uh, certainly pictures are worth a thousand words and it's getting late. Uh, in this screenshot, it is, uh, certainly, uh, kind of, uh, uh, typical playground equipment that we've had, uh, successful playground equipment that we've had in our parks. Uh, traditional components such as, uh, five, uh, for children five through twelve um, and for children two to five. Those are separate playing features. Uh, the bottom left is a inclusive spinner. Uh, it is ADA accessible, accessible. And you've got in the middle of a walk, walk, rock climbing wall. I'll slow down. And then you've also got, uh, swing sets, um, and specifically inclusive swing sets, um, as well. Talked about the fitness area. Uh, the fitness area certainly includes a variety of components that, uh, many individuals can utilize. Again, words say a thousand things, but the, uh, Councilman Boomgarne was talking about, uh, he was looking forward to doing the bamboo challenge, which is on the, on the right there. Um, and so we're looking forward to that. Also, other park components include the continuous walking path, uh, disc, uh, golf. Um, it's just a couple of, um, holes. Uh, it's just to give individuals an idea of what disc golf is about. Um, we are hoping in the near future to add, uh, some more discs golf, uh, in our area. More to come on that lately, uh, later. We also have bathrooms, of course. Uh, I think with this park, uh, staff has done a really good job on focusing on lighting, safety lighting, uh, throughout, uh, the evenings. And then, of course, open space, uh, for children just to naturally play, which is, uh, almost a lost art these days right now. And then, uh, we certainly have a full-court basketball court. Unique feature about, uh, this park, uh, that is unique as it relates to the state of California. There are only three, uh, that will, uh, that are built like this. Um, it is right in the middle, a precast pump track. And then on the outside, uh, exterior, we have low and medium skill tracks, uh, with obstacles. And then, of course, we have, um, bike fix-it stations, uh, which, uh, are equipped to work on bikes. And then on the, uh, middle right, you've got a bike entrance sign which, uh, provides opportunity for paid sponsorships, uh, to help defer the cost of maintenance. So the project went out the bid, six vendors submitted bids. Um, and Marina Landscape, uh, was the lowest bid of a, at a right around two point five million dollars. Estimated cost, as you can see, is just a little over three point two million, which, um, uh, has these components in it. And then the project is to be funded through our C I P account. Staff recommends a one, uh, million, two hundred and sixty-four hundred and eight thousand, uh, the funding shortfall to bridge, uh, and utilize the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, once completed, the city will be reimbursed for eight hundred thousand dollars from a grant that we received, we received through the Land Water Conservation Fund. And any remaining, uh, ARPA funds would be transferred back to the city's, uh, ARPA funding account. I've already read this once. These are the recommendations before you. Um, and I would gladly take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any questions from the council?
Through the mayor, just have a quick comment.
The mayor just have a quick comment. I know, I just want to applaud staff's efforts in going out and securing additional funding for things from community groups. I know that there's a, there's a group that's going to lose its funding if they don't get it, get it allocated to this park. So I think that's an option for us to continue to put good stuff in there. So I appreciate the efforts on staff seeking alternative funding methods.
Thank you. Any more comments from this council?
Yes, if I may, Brad, could you go back to the map real quick?
The, the, the overview?
Yeah, overview?
Yeah. And I just wanted to circle back with Heather on something, because Heather, you came up to me and asked about the linkage between the bike path and the park. Does that answer your question on the map there? Huh? Does you see where the bike path will go through that? Oh, your car, you're going to talk, okay. I didn't, I didn't realize that might fall. I just want to make sure you had your question answered. All right, thank, never mind.
Any other comments? Then we will go to comments from the public, Heather Essman.
Well, again, this, this is the reason why I'm here, is for this, but, um, so I, I actually thought I probably should have contacted, uh, Mr. McIntyre, because I did have some additional questions, but there was a couple of things that I wanted to make sure that we get that on the record. And one of the things that I had asked Councilman Harris was that map that you had, if you look at it, you don't see the connector between, so you can stop at this one, you can see that the current bike path stops at Hooper, and between Hooper and the new park, there's nothing planned, at least not on this, it's not in this project. So I'm curious as far as what's the timing, or even if there is a plan between Hooper Park, connecting the two part, the park and the pa- path together, because right now, I, I drove there recently, um, it's a bit of, I encourage y'all to look, um, it's, it's basically going down on to, what is that, Jefferson? And then coming up some other little path there, there will be people who will be connecting that, they're going to do that, whether there's a path there or not. And I don't know if that's private property or if that's city property, if that's going to cause some problems. You're also going to end up having a lot of students that want to go to the high school coming across that way and coming down harder, because that's probably the best way for them, if they're going to take a bike. And then in the afternoon, just go back up to the bike, bike path, the, the pump path or whatever they, they were calling it. But one of the questions I had, um, was in the newspaper, it said that, uh, in two thousand nineteen, the city received a eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant with the required eight-hundred-thousand-dollar city match to construct a park. So the eight-hundred-thousand dollars you mentioned just briefly are, where is, do we have the eight-hundred-thousand dollars? Is that basically out of the one-point-nine million that was in the account? Uh, also, the one million dollars from the, uh, American Rescue, uh, Act Plan? I'm not su- I know that there's requirements on what you can spend that on, and whether or not this is an allowable activity, I'm not sure. It seems like it's stretching it if you're trying to say it's some, some, somehow, some impact from COVID. It's not really like a COVID-related thing, so I'm not sure if there, there's some sort of connection between the two, and if somebody wanted to explain that. But anyways, that, those were most of my questions that I think that, otherwise I can clarify the rest with Mr. McIntyre.
So in terms of the bike path connection between the, um, east end of the current bike path at Hooper Road to the connection to this new park, we actually have a grant for construction of a bike path. Dock and Engineering is designing that right now. So in terms of timing, it won't be in the same timeframe as this project, but it'll be shortly thereafter. And not only includes that connection, but we also have a grant through State Cog to construct a, uh, shared path on the west side of Harder Parkway from Butte House Road to Highway twenty, because currently there's no sidewalk along that west side. And so it will kind of finish that connection from the bike path down to the high school so that kids that are going in that area. In terms of the ARPA money, um, we are going to have a, a funding workshop in January, on January twenty-fifth, where, um, Spencer Morrison, the finance director, is going to go through not only the ARPA money, but the CARES Act money, and how it's been allocated, what it's to be utilized for, restrictions on it. And so he will give a full breakdown of what's been allocated to date, how it complies with the, um, the different funding requirements.
And answer your questions? Eight-hundred thousand, do you want to handle that, Mr. McIntyre, please?
Yeah, so if I, if I understand the question correctly, so, um, at the time that we applied for that grant, the city had eight-hundred-thousand dollars to match their eight-hundred-thousand dollars. And that, that is part of this project, obviously it doesn't include the entire project, but our, our match was actually before we applied for the grant.
All good? All right. Any other questions from the public, Tom? All right, any online?
No public comment.
All right, back to the council for action.
Okay, I'll make, uh, Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I'd like to move that, uh, council adopt resolution, which makes the following actions, including items number one, two, three, and four, in the staff report.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries.
For council members, I'd just like to chime in at this time. Thank you very much for your support. And I also wanted to thank Public Works, and really specifically a gentleman by the name of Josh Wolfe, who has just spent an amount, a huge amount of time, uh, and I'm, I'm, uh, a little picky sometimes and a little needy, and, um, he has certainly done a great job. Um, and so I, he, I just want to make sure council understands that that a gentleman by name Josh Wolfe has just done an outstanding job for us, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item thirty-five, the city manager employment agreement. And Mr. Chaffin, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, city council. I'll make this very short. The city council approved, uh, appointed Diana as the, uh, city manager at the last meeting, directed us to come back with an agreement. We have an agreement before you this evening. Basically, it's the same as the prior city managers, except there's, uh, leave accruals are slightly different, given the time and service for Ms. Langley, and the city continues to pay for professional licensing. So it's basically the same agreement as was in place before. However, there are new Brown Act requirements that require a legislative body to actually read out each one of the benefits. So after this item goes to the public for any comments, before you can adopt this agreement or approve the agreement, if you're so inclined, literally have to read out the, the items in the staff report. I'm sorry about that, mayor.
Uh, and actually, I, when we get to that point, I will, uh, kindly ask our city attorney to read it if possible.
You, you know, uh, I would normally jump in and just go through it as quickly as possible, but it's supposed to come from a legislative body.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right, any, any, uh, comments from the, uh, council on this, before we open up to public comment? Oh, I like that comment. Uh, any, uh, any public comment? All right, any from online?
No public comment.
All right, then we'll bring it back to the council. I will go ahead and do it. All right, as required by the Brown Act, Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-three, Sub C, Sub Three, prior to taking action on this item, the council must publicly announce a summary of the action being considered, if adopted. The proposed resolution will approve the city manager employment agreement with Diana Langley, essentially with the same compensation and benefits as the prior city manager, as follows. Term, four years from December tenth, twenty-twenty-one to December tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Salary, annual salary of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand at the conclusion of each year, the council, in its sole discretion, may grant employee an increase in salary based upon satisfactory or above performance. Three, health benefits. City shall provide health insurance with premiums paid by both the city, eighty percent, and the employee, twenty percent, same as other executive management employees. Four, dental and vision benefits. City will offer dental and vision insurance with premiums paid for both the city, ninety percent employee, ten percent, same as other executive management employees. Five, disability. City shall provide short-term and long-term disability benefits for the employee, same as other executive management employees. Six, life insurance. City shall provide life insurance benefits in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand for employee and two thousand for dependents, same as other executive management employees. Seven, vehicle allowance. City shall provide a vehicle allowance of five hundred per month. Eight, cellphone. City shall provide a city-issued cellphone. Nine, retirement. The city shall enroll the employee in the Cal's PERS Retirement Program at the two-point-seven percent at age fifty-five formula. Severance. For termination without cause, the city manager will be entitled to nine months' salary and nine months' health insurance, subject to any limitations provided by Government Code Sections five-three-two-six-oh and five-three-two-six-one. Eleven, vacation. Employee shall accrue vacation leave at a rate provided to executive management employees, and shall start at the bi-weekly rate of seven-point-one hours. Twelve, sick leave. Employee shall accrue sick leave at the rate provided to executive management employees. Employee is entitled to accrue all unused sick leave without limit. Thirteen, administrative leave. Employee shall be credited with eighty hours of administrative leave annually, subject to certain cash-out and carryover provisions. Fourteen, holiday. The city currently recognizes the following holidays, and employee shall be entitled to eight hours of holiday leave time for each such holiday. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day, Washington's Birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, after Thanksgiving, day after Thanksgiving, Christmas, eight hours of holiday time to be used on either Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, or a combination on both days as approved by the department head, and two floating holidays. With that said, is there any comments or questions from the council? Are we ready for action? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt, uh, resolution approving the city manager employment agreement between the city of Uva City and Diana Langley, effective December tenth, twenty-twenty-one at five P M.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Uh, do we need roll call vote on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Congratulations again, Ms. Langley, and I guess you get to stay. So, all right, so, thirty-six, future agenda items. This is an opportunity for us to discuss, uh, items with the city manager, about items that came up during the meeting this, uh, evening that you'd like to have brought back before the council at a later date. Are there any, uh, other comments relating to agenda items that you would like to come back, uh, during a future meeting?
Less items.
All right, less items. All right, hearing none, let's go on and move to reports and communications. Um, we'll start with the city manager's report.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be city manager, and, uh, just reminder, city hall will be closed December twenty-fourth through December thirty-first for the holidays, and happy holidays to everyone. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to city council reports. Councilmember Boom Garden.
Haven't led off for quite a long time. Had an opportunity to, uh, participate with fellow councilpeople and Sutter County Supervisors, and kudos to the city staff for the downtown Christmas stroll. Very well attended down there, and, uh, and, uh, I think it was Mike that, uh, got the lights going after some vandalism, so, uh, it was, it was a good event, it was nice to be out. Did have an opportunity to swear in the new board of the Downtown Business Association. The, the now mayor and the, the now vice mayor were also there, and, uh, that was, uh, Downtown Business Association appears to be pretty active and ongoing concern. On last Saturday was at Rees Across America out at the Sutter Cemetery with, uh, the vice mayor and myself. I do think it's important to know, we had a lot of public, uh, involvement today at an informational meeting. Um, several weeks, maybe a month or so ago, we had one on cannabis, and I think it's important, because it was a highly charged item, and charged by, I mean, a lot of, uh, a lot of people participated.
Appreciate that. The Rees Across America was, um, and an event that I haven't attended, the one in Uva City Cemetery. It was kind of a little maze to get in there, but once I was in there, um, it was, it was intimate, it was, uh, few of us, but, um, it was an honor to be there and to, and to participate. And, um, like the rest of the council, I mean, I just want to thank all of our city staff, because none of this gets done without your work. I mean, Brian was fixing my computer over here, because I wasn't able to load up my documents correctly. So everyone, um, from, you know, Brian to, uh, everyone across the city is, I'm, I'm really grateful for all the work that you do. It's not just, um, during the holidays, but throughout the whole year. So I just want to say thank you for that, and I am ready for a little holiday break, so I'm excited for that, for Christmas, and, um, we celebrate Christmas, and we have a lot of holidays, and, um, we're going to have a New Year's, and so we got, we got a lot of things going for my family this, um, holiday break, and I wish a lot of good health and cheers for everyone else. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, not in a whole lot to report either. I took advantage of the kind of the lull in the busy season with the, the holidays to take a, a vacation. And, um, so that was the, the gist of my last time, it's our last meeting. We, we have, um, one thing at, uh, Regional Housing, that we, we made the decision to increase staffing at one of the housing projects that we manage into, th- there's a identified need of services, service availability for the residents outside of banker's hours. And so we've, we've made the decision to increase funding and get some more, uh, staffing on site, um, to provide the, for some folks, the, you know, the, some of the clientele there, they, uh, they need it, they need the help, they need the support, and it's not necessarily going to happen at convenient times. And so we did expand that. I was proud of making the board, our board making that decision. Other than that, things are pretty much, uh, routine. We're gearing up, um, for next year and looking forward to it. Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. I'll try to get through this. Um, so we started off with the country, excuse me, countywide oversight board, where we stressed the importance of having a quorum to have a meeting, and that was kind of it. Been out for a year, one year. Uh, moving on, uh, Regional Waste Management Authority, I'll get through this very quickly, because I know we're all tired. Um, the recommendation was to adopt resolution authorizing the submittal of, of regional application under the S P three-eighty-three Local Assistance Grant Program proposed. Um, there was also an execution of legal services with the firm, Rich Fudge, so forth and so on. Um, the big news out of, uh, waste management and, and, um, um, also, I'm sorry, uh, waived the first reading and introduced a mandatory orga- organic waste disposal or reduction ordinance in addition to that. There is going to be, there is approval of an executive director, as you know, um, and a management analyst one-dash-two job, uh, in, uh, regional, um, waste management. And that ties in with, um, transit, as we discussed earlier. They, they had a, um, position, analyst one position, that she was, uh, commuting from Oroville, so they promoted, um, Janet Fry to that position, and they're going to float the, um, Janet's position. So we're all happy about that. With transit, we authorize the executive director to sign and submit, uh, a T R C P grant application is proposed. There, let's see, what else? Um, authoris-, uh, authorized execution of legal services agreement as proposed. Talked about the employment. They did not get the race grant. And, um, they talked about how, uh, state workers are tending not to go down to the Capitol, and so their, um, ridership is dropped. Um, and that concludes transit. Um, mosquito, that's pretty slow, other than, um, they are still looking for an ecologist. Oh, the approval of an audit, uh, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And, uh, that was passed, ordering pesticides. Um, like I said, pretty much, uh, everything's dormant, this is a slow, slow time of year anyway, so, uh, kind of a, a quick meeting, and, uh, as councilman, uh, Boom Garden mentioned, uh, the D V A, uh, installation was a success. I intended the employee, um, winter celebration out here in the courtyard, which was, uh, kudos to the, um, city staff for putting on a, a, a great job. And, uh, thanks for Sam for bringing his heater out there, that was awesome. I like to borrow that sometimes. And uh, thanks for Sam for bringing his heater out there. That was awesome. I like to borrow that sometimes. Um, attended the Marysville Parade. Amazing. Uh, they did a great job with that. Um, attended the museum uh board meeting. They've got a brand new director, which is exciting. Um, and it's also, as was m- mentioned earlier, Rees Rees Across America, for those of you that don't know. Um, if you do have a a loved one who's interred at Sutter. Um, for I think it's uh, they've got a program for a hundred dollars. Uh, you can sponsor a flag. And if that person served, they have uh dog tags that they have framed uh and on display, and it's 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 pretty cool. Um, and with that. I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm gonna make this real short because it's been a long night. Uh, I attended all the events that my colleagues already mentioned. Uh, with the one exception of Rees Across America, uh as I was out of town because of my wedding anniversary. But uh, my wife and I do support that because of uh. We have to honor our veterans. That's just that's just part of what we need to do. Uh, I want to say thank you to our E team, Ms. Langley, our entire staff, Mr. Chaffin. Uh, Sierra, this was one of the biggest, if not the biggest, agenda that we've had in a long time, if ever. You guys did a great job. It's been a long meeting. I just want to say with all sincerity, thank you. You guys did a fabulous job. And uh with that, uh, want to wish everyone a uh very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And we will be back in January with a workshop on the finances and back for January eighteenth for the next council meeting. And with that, we will be adjourned.
Yubisutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake. Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking. Moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.